This is so awkward for me, though.
Why?
Because I serve.
I know, yeah.
It's so awkward.
It's great, though. It's...I can't call him commissioner. It's mayor. It's like, that's not the way that it works.
You ready to run through this before 12? Mr. Clerk. Ready?
Are we on TV?
Good morning. Good morning. You just hit her with the camera. I'd like to welcome everyone and wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Recording in progress.
We'll try that again.
Take two.
Take two.
Take.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the January 10, 2023 City Commission meeting. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you for joining us. Today is a very special day here in the city. Not only because it's a commission meeting and the first commission meeting of the year, but we're gonna be celebrating some very important milestones here in the city. So to get us started, it's my privilege to bring back Reverend Wayne Wright from St. Philip's Episcopal Church. Sir, please join us to get the morning off started in a right foot.
Good morning. I bring the Commission Mayor greetings from St. Philip's Episcopal Church, which this year is celebrating its 80th anniversary here in the Gables and from Reverend Mary Beth Conroy, their pastor, the members of the church and St. Philip's Episcopal School. I bring you greetings and offer their best wishes and prayers as we begin today's meeting with this invocation. Let us pray. We give you thanks for this day in all its beauty and for living in a time of opportunity, potential, and challenges. Bless this city of Coral Gables, all who live, work, and serve here. For those whose vision, investment, and dedication built the community which we inherit; for those who today teach our children, keep us safe, and guard our well-being. Bless this meeting today, that guided by the founding principles of our nation, we may all work together for a common good that is generous, compassionate, and just. We also, we ask all these things in the spirit of goodness, love, and truth. Amen.
Reverend, thank you. We'd like to extend our best wishes to you, your congregation, and worshipers on behalf of the city. Thank you. We look forward to having you again. God bless.
Happy New Year.
Thank you. Thank you. While his role is as Commissioner on his second tour of duty here in the city, I will always refer to this gentleman as my mayor. Mayor Kason, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to presentations and protocol documents. Before we do that, I'd like to just take a personal point of privilege to welcome, as I mentioned before, Commissioner Kason, who is joining us here, who is, who will always be mayor in my eyes, to his first meeting in the City Commission for 2023. I'd like to thank you for agreeing to serve, and I'd like to give a few points of information in regards to the mayor. As I mentioned before, we'd like to welcome former Mayor Jim Kason to his first commission meeting since being newly appointed. Jim Kason rejoined the Coral Gables City Commission as interim Commissioner at December 14, 2022. The Commission appointed him unanimously to serve out the remainder of George Ford's term due to his past experience as a public servant in the city. He formerly served as mayor of the city of Coral Gables from April 2011. He was re-elected with 71% of the vote in 2013 and returned for a third term in April 2015. He retired in April 2017. Former Mayor Kason is a retired U.S. Foreign Service Officer with more than 48 years of national and international public service, including extensive experience in Latin America as the leader of multi-agency embassy communities. He has fluent in five different languages. He has had 10 years of higher education at several of the nation's most prestigious institutions, studying international affairs and economics. He is a Fulbright Scholar and a graduate of Dartmouth College, John Hopkins University, and the National War College. He has been married for over 50 years to his lovely wife Carmen. The Kasons have two sons. One is an American Airlines pilot and the other is in international business. And they also have six, more importantly, six wonderful grandchildren. Sir, I want to say thank you for honoring us and accepting this position till April. I did my, I did everything I could because I have a lot of respect to see if he would potentially run for office. He turned me down. I won't ask again. He's enjoying retirement, but he's doing us this favor to come back and fill this position. So we welcome you. We thank you for serving the city of Coral Gables, and it's a privilege to have you here with us. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you very much for the honor of thinking of me. It's, it's, it's great to be back here. It's great to see familiar faces. I've had a lot of briefings. The city has done some incredible things over the last five years. I'm really proud of the city and what it's accomplished. I'm happy that I'm able to do something for the next four or five meetings to continue the, the good work that you all are doing and hope that people that, that really would like to sit in the seat, go out there and get themselves elected because it's the voters, not the residents, that are going to elect people to be sitting here permanently.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it again. We're blessed to have you. I would also like to take a moment of personal privilege, just a moment, to remember Harvey Ruin, Miami-Dade County Clerk of Courts, who passed away on December 31, 2022. He was a legendary public servant who served in politics dating back to the 1960s and will always be remembered for his selfless service to Miami-Dade County. Thank you very much. Moving on to presentations and protocol documents. Item A1, Presentation of Resolution of Condolences to the Family of Sally Jude. Whereas Sally Jude was born in Baltimore, Maryland in 1926 and was a Coral Gables resident until her untimely demise on December 23 of 2022, she graduated from the University of Maryland with a degree of economics and was awarded a Capodella Sorority Scholarship to do graduate work at the University of Minnesota in Minneapolis, where she received a master's in elementary education. It was there that she met a young medical student, James Jude, at the Catholic Club gatherings, and they were married in 1952. And whereas in the mid-1950s, the Jews returned to Baltimore to live, work, and raise their family, it was while Dr. Jude was doing his residency at John Hopkins University that he was part of a team that pioneered the research that led to the development of CPR. Dr. Jude's work with CPR received national recognition and brought the Judes and their family to Miami in 1964, where Dr. Jude became chief of thoracic and cardiovascular surgery at the University of Miami School of Medicine and at the Jackson Memorial Hospital. And whereas upon arriving in Miami, Sally, while raising her family of seven children, five boys and two girls, became an active and integral part of the community. She was involved with the Medical Wives Group, her church, and in her children's school. She is credited with being part of the small group that founded the Dade Reading Foundation, one of the earliest programs in Miami-Dade County for learning disabled children. And whereas Sally was passionate, who during her life was an astute businesswoman, preservationist, environmentalist, and educator, who had an astounding life of service to others, love for her community, and deep affection for her family and friends, which was apparent to all who knew her. She selfishly gave of her time and energy serving the Coral Gables Garden Club for over 40 years and her beloved city and county on numerous boards and committees. To know Sally was to experience her kindheart, her kindheartness, warmth, and always having time to stop and give support and encouragement to those coming up behind her or attempting to follow in her large footsteps. She is to be revered as an inspiration to all. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commission of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, that we extend our heartfelt sympathy to the bereaved family on this occasion of their great loss. I witness, therefore, I have here on to place my hand on cause of great seal of the City of Coral Gables to be affixed on the 10th day of January 2023. I had the pleasure of spending many moments with Sally. She was an exceptional, exceptional individual. Many things could be said about a person who's had a career of this magnitude. But I think what was most impressive to me as a person who has served on this commission, and I think along with my colleagues, was that she always put the city of Coral Gables first. She never compromised on her values, and she understood the importance of really supporting this city and ensuring that our values were upheld. So I'm not sure if her family has gotten here, but I'd like to welcome them, please, to join us. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Commission, City Manager, City Clerk. My name is Peter Jude, one of Sally Jude's seven children. I'm joined here today by my sisters Cecilia Prale and my brother, youngest brother Christopher Jude. It's, it's so hard, you know. My mother was 96 and a half years old, so the bad thing about that is you're around so long, you leave a big hole in her family's heart, and we are so honored for the recognition from the city of Coral Gables. As you so eloquently said, Mr. Mayor, my parents moved here in 1964, so almost 60 years ago. And what we learned from them is when you move somewhere, you embrace the community that you move to. My mom and dad always said, "Don't just sit back, but become involved." And I think my dad and my mother were the epitome of that. Also, be a leader, not just a worker. My father was on the planning board many, many years ago, and he saw all things going on that disturbed him, so he said, "Well, I need to do more." Like he didn't have enough to do with seven children and being a busy surgeon. He ran for mayor of the beautiful city, the city beautiful, Coral Gables. Although he didn't win, which might have been a blessing for our family, he didn't sit back. And my mother was very much the same. Three major areas of her interest were first and foremost, her faith in God, her Roman Catholic faith, and her family, which she had a lot of. But as we grew up and went through our struggles and she was involved, whether it be learning disabilities or whatever, she then found time to be involved in many more things. Two major things were preservation of our natural environment, which the City of Coral Gables is a place that represents that in any greatest ways. But additionally, historic preservation. We are so blessed in this city beautiful with our natural resources, environmental natural resources, and our preservation of our buildings in our community. Most recently, my mother wrote a letter of support for the garden of our Lord. The garden of our Lord might not seem significant as there are so many important things that we deal with. But I think it speaks to what my mother felt. It's a garden, which she was a member of Coral Gables Garden Club and many other organizations. But it wasn't just a garden. It was the garden of our Lord. Something that she felt that maybe she was 96 and a half, but she still needed to be involved. And so she spoke to that and wrote a letter of support. So with that, I want to say thank you again from the bottom of my heart and commit to not sitting back, but being involved, whether it be the city beautiful or the city of pleasant living, where I live in the city of South Miami. My sister lives in Pinecrest, so we're residents here, some living now out of state and probably watching today. Because they learned the lesson from my mother. You don't sit back. You get involved. Thank you.
She wrote some really nice things on the Garden Club newsletters.
Or is it?
I remember reading those.
Did I just say something?
Good morning. I just want to say a few words about Sally Jude. We had many of the same interests and thank you, and but in the last few years, we became very nice friends. And I just want to continue what Peter was saying about her can-do attitude. She would call me a couple of times a week and say, we need to do this. And I knew that kind of meant, Marlon, you need to do this. And but it was always, always good things, always planting trees. Commissioner Anderson and I have a little tree on the golf course that we planted for her 96th birthday last spring. Still has the pink bow on it, so if you're out playing golf, look for a tiny little tree with a pink bow. But and it, you know, it was always, she just kept active and is an inspiration to all of us. Her eyesight was failing, so she listened to books, always had a book going. I think, was it about 10 a week or something that you would deliver? And she was just, it's just an inspiration. And I thought that at the funeral, one of the nicest things that the priest said was, God wanted her home for Christmas. Kind of broke my heart, but and what a way, what a nice way to live to 96 and have dinner with your family and pass away within 24 hours. So it was just very nice. Thank you for letting me say something.
I just have one moment. Sally Jude touched many people's lives, and the image of her working at the Royal Ponciana Festival, gathering tirelessly, working to the point of pure exhaustion was just amazing of her and representative of the spirit that she had. That festival continues on. She's asked me to help with the leadership of it. We've expanded it now to where we're going to have a golf tournament on the Granada Golf Course. And I just, I hope to be able to somewhat feel maybe the toe of her shoe and carry on in that fashion, so. Any of you golfers, we can come out and play golf or attempt to play golf, so join in.
For sure. Well, thank you very much. Again, thank you to the family. You know, these are always tough moments, but in these moments, we remember and we take a page from Sally and her dedication to the city. And her legacy will continue to live, will continue to live for a very, very long time. Because our city is set apart from every other city and from every other community by individuals like Sally who shine a light on what needs to be addressed here in our city and how to do things the right way without losing focus on what has made the city so special. So thank you for being here, and your in our thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Moving on to item A2. Solange? Oh, Belkies. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayors, Commissioner. Just a little bit of background on this item. Let me read it. It's the record here. So we have a presentation of a $2,737 check, donation from the City of Coral Gables to the Friends of Gables High collected during the sip and shop event. So a little bit of background. In an effort to provide continuity in programming during the busy holiday season, the Economic Development Department organized a sip and shop event on Miracle Mile. 19 businesses on Miracle Mile stayed open late. They served wine and they gave bites, and they also provided some promotional items and discounts to the guests. The feedback was very positive from the businesses and from the guests that attended. I'd like to thank Francesca Valdez for leading this effort and Genesis Gomez for supporting the team and the community, the Coral Gables Community Foundation for being a great partner. Proceeds from the ticket sales benefited Friends of Gables High. We're very thankful because their members also attended. They bought tickets and they were really in presence there. So today, Friends of Gables High is represented here by June Morris and Tom Parker, and we're very fortunate that they were able to be here to receive the check, which again is $2,737.66. And Mayor, if you would do the honors of that.
I think we'd both like to thank the Commission for doing this. Number one, it was a really great event. I saw so many people out shopping that night, and I walked into shops that I didn't know existed. So it was a tremendous event, and to give the proceeds this year to Friends of Gables High is truly wonderful and thoughtful because we are a community group. And Friends of Gables High is made up of alumni, including Kirk Menendez, over here, Commissioner Menendez, but also filled with citizens such as Tom Parker, whose children go to Gables High. And this is our namesake high school, Coral Gables High School, our public high school. It's an international back laureate school, an A-rated school. It's a top-tier magnet school, and every year its graduates go to the top universities in this country, Harvard, Yale, Brown, Cornell, the University of Florida. They go to them all. So thank you very much for showing your support for our school.
Thank you. Just to reiterate what June said, thank you very much for the support. We're super excited about this year. I know a lot of you know this, but the county is in for almost $50 million worth of renovations. That's going to continue to happen over the next two or three years, but there's a lot more work to do. And so our group hopes to continue to raise funds to help the students and the staff make it all it can be. So it's a great school. We want to make it greater. And thank everybody for their support over the past few years and going forward. Thank you.
No, it's just a thing. Go ahead.
No, I just want to say thank you. I've gone to multiple of your meetings. What you're doing, what both of you are doing, and the entire board is incredible. The last meeting we had was a walkthrough of the current facilities and all the upgrades that have been done. I happened to be very close friends since I was a youngster with the new principal, Tony. He's doing a very good job there. He's a breath of fresh air. You know, the facilities have never looked better. Commissioner Menendez was very generous in the donation that he gave to his alma mater. But more importantly, I think what you're doing, what you're doing is critically important because you're bringing attention and awareness to the school and to really hopefully bringing forth an endowment and, you know, different other programs and money and attention and bringing, you know, the alumni back to the school, which have so much to give back. Not only financially, but a lot of them are professionals. A lot of them have done great things in their lives, and they want to give back to an institution which is so respected, like Coral Gables Senior High. So thank you for shining a positive light on the school. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Moving on to A3.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, sir.
Happy New Year to all. So I'm here to present our first firefighter of the month for the new year. And he's a tenured officer with the Coral Gables Fire Department. And when you get hired in the fire department, we have a term that we like to use, and we we say that you own it. And we use that for everything, whether it's you own the success of an emergency call, you own the success of your people, you own how well your crew and your station performs. And Captain Offridge embodies that. He owns it all, from the smallest detail. His station is no different than his home. His staff are his responsibility, and every call, he owns it. So for his dedication, his willingness to mentor, and his ownership, he is our firefighter of the month.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Chief De La Russa. It's actually pride and ownership. As the chief mentioned, it's a couple of words that we learned as officers in training through everything that we've gone through throughout the years. But I really appreciate being recognized today, and thank you again for honoring me today with this award. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to A4.
Morning. Happy New Year. I'd agree with the Human Resources Department. Today is a pleasure to be here to introduce and recognize Brandon Boiling as having been selected as a part-time employee of the fourth quarter of 2022. Brandon joined the city in April of 2022 as an Emergency Management Coordinator for the Fire Department. He was nominated for the great work he has performed in his division and for the many accomplishments achieved during his short time with the city. One that stood out to his superiors, supervisors, was because of Brandon's attention to detail in his work. Recently, while working on a citywide emergency notification project called Everbridge, Brandon was able to identify some flaws in the visual distribution and corrected the issues before the notifications went out. For these reasons, Brandon was nominated and was selected as the part-time employee of the fourth quarter of 2022. We would like to join, join us, Chief and Brandon, to present you.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning. I'd like to say thank you to the chief for nominating me for this award, and I accept this award wholeheartedly. I'd also like to say thank you to our fire admin, to Captain Andrew Fletcher, to Emergency Manager Mark Stolzenberg, and to my family for coming today. Finally, I would like to thank the commission as well as the mayor. Thank you.
I'd like to note that he started with us as an intern, so word to all the interns.
It works. Moving on to A5.
Good morning again. Another great employee we will be recognizing today is the employee of the month for December of 2022.
for December of 2022. Nicolas Sainz. Nicolas joined the Office of Communications over a year ago. And during his short time with the city, he has demonstrated many qualities which resulted in having three department heads having submitted a nomination for this award. Nicolas is very known around the city for his positive attitude, teamwork, collaboration and continued partnership implementing technology which facilitates citizen engagement and communications with our residents, visitors and businesses. He has proven to be an invaluable team member who skills continue to grow. One of his greatest contributions to the city and his department recently was to serve as the lead with the day-to-day development of the city's new website. His problem-solving skills, qualities, accomplishments and commitment to excellence, customer service is what makes Nicolas well-deserving of this special award. Please join me, Director and Brandon.
As the HR Director said, Nick was actually not only nominated by me, but also by our city clerk, Billy Orqueja, and by our Innovation and Technology Director, Raimundo Rodulfo, because of the work that he has done, which has been exemplary in the website. You know, most people know that it's Raimundo, Billy and I that were the leaders of it, but it's actually Nick that has met every week and continues to meet as we continue to refine the website. He's also the interface with all of our departments and he makes sure that it's kept up to date. And when we see that there's glitches in the system, he's the one that's, that works at the king's house. So in my nomination, I said that versatility is the hallmark of a high performer and Nick is highly versatile at whatever task is given his way. He started actually as a contract employee, so he's been with the city for a while. He was here when I joined and he has actually been a person that has kept me here because if not, I don't know what I would do without him. And as a versatile performer, he's just like, great jazz players have a great range and he does have a great range. So I really thank him for all he does for our city every day. And for the picture, if Raimundo could also join us since he's also...
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you so much. Hey Commissioners, Mayor, appreciate the recognition. Special thanks to Martha, Billy and Raimundo and Reis and Goyasso for their direction with the website. That's a project that it's never really going to end because it just keeps getting better. And also thanks to all the residents for providing their feedback. Please keep it coming. I just want to make it better. So thanks.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes for the regular city commission dated December 13th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, moving on to public comments.
We have one public comment, Mr. Mayor, is from Ms. Maria Cruz.
Ms. Cruz, good morning. The floor is yours. Oh wait, if I may, just very briefly, I'd like to make sure that I continue to remind the residents and the business owners and the non-residents that we formulated public comments so people can join us and engage with the commission and along with all the employees. If you'd like to make a comment about one thing or another that deals with the city and that's pertinent to the city, you know, please take this time to come and speak up. We've afforded the ability of anyone to not only speak in person, but also speak via Zoom. You can send in an email. You can send us to the clerk, whatever you'd like. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this time for one hour is afforded to the public to come and have, you know, let their voices be heard.
Well, good morning and Happy New Year. By the way, Mayor, remember it's Mrs. Cruz.
Mrs. Cruz.
Emilio gets upset because, you know, it's going to be 55 years. He wants to get some credit.
Some attention.
Yeah, some credit. All right, coming in this morn- oh, Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road, Coral Gables.
Oh, you had moved out of the city for a second there.
Oh, no, 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 no. I want to follow the rules and I know for some people it's important to know how long you've been here. Well, we bought our houses in 1976 and been there ever since across from St. Augustine's. So anybody who wants to find me, that's where we are. You all gave me a lot of time to think. You know, this pause, this time that we were off, I had time to think. And actually, coming in this morning, I was debating what I was going to bring up. And then I parked on Billmore Way. And I said to myself, I'm so glad that Emilio never wants to come because if he wanted to come, it'd be very difficult for him to make it here. I don't know how many of you have taken the time to see that we still have our front door blocked. We cannot come in through the front door. I'm sure that there are many good reasons, but I don't think, I think the time has come to open the front door. I imagine having brought Emilio with me this morning, parking on Billmore Way, following the sign to the ramp, going all the way past the building to get to the ramp. Then I had choices. I could either go in the back, go around the building, come in the back way, or I could go the other way, go around the building, pass the little parking space that I could have parked if there was parking, but usually there's no parking there, go around the back of the building to come in. Now, some people come in wheelchairs, I'm sure. Emilio uses a walker. It's very hard, the distance is very hard for somebody who has difficulty walking to get to the front of this building, to go in. I understand reasons. We went through a pandemic. I know that we have safety issues. The same way we can have the security guard in the back, we could have the security person in the front. And I also realized something. All the notices are posted by the front door. So the people that come in this building do not see the notices there, okay? So there are several issues and the reason that I'm here again is to ask you all, the elected people, the appointed people, the people in charge, to direct the staff to open the front door of this building. This building belongs to the people and we should be able to access it from the front door. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, very briefly, I mean, we've talked about it before in the past in regards to accessibility issues, safety here in City Hall. What is your concern as I see other, you know, city halls implementing even further restrictions in regards to metal detectors and actual police?
It's something, Mayor, that I'm working with Chief Hudek on and we'll be implementing something here. Right now, what that does is funnels everybody through the guard and that's the reason for that from a safety perspective. However, Chief Hudek and I are formulating a plan for City Hall.
Because this is not, this is not an issue anymore about COVID and I've actually heard from several employees who are actually concerned, concerned about, you know, people coming in and out of the building and not having potentially further safety protocols in place. Because again, when you look at newer buildings, everybody's funnelled through one entrance and one exit, which is again, an opportunity to provide further safety. So I understand what Ms. Cruz is saying, but I'm not 100% on board with all those comments because I want to make sure that we don't compromise. And I've had incidents in my own office, in my own office, where people have walked into my, into my office while I'm in the meetings, where people have walked in and addressed my staff where my staff has felt uncomfortable, you know about this. We've talked about it before on multiple occasions. And I've talked to other staff members in this building who have told me that, you know, again, there's no checks. There's no checks in regards to the amount of entrances and exits throughout the, throughout the city hall. So while I understand her comments, I think we need to really look at it in a way that if we're going to implement one way in, one way out, metal detectors, well, we got to figure something out because when the employees are telling me that they feel a little uncomfortable about who's walking in, it, you know, I think we need to address it.
We've already implemented a number of issues that I would rather not discuss.
I know.
However, we still have more, more things to come.
But that's my point. I want people to know that we're addressing it and we're looking at it. This is not a COVID issue because trust me, you don't see anybody wearing masks. There's no, there's no, there's no barriers here. This is not an issue about COVID.
That's correct, Mayor.
Is there any problem of putting the notices on the front door, on the door that's open now?
We'll be taking a look at that, Mayor, yes. And, but we've already implemented a number of things that we'd rather not discuss now, but, but we have further things to implement that I'm working with, with the chief on. And we can certainly do that. We, we need to formulate the final plan and implement that based, based on what, on all those issues.
Just a quick comment. As far as accessibility is concerned and the distance people have to go, I think it would go a long way if we could put some additional signage as to where the accessible route is and if we do need additional handicap spots based upon, you know, demand, we can put them closer to where the existing ramp is. Because I know it's very difficult for some folks to walk any appreciable distance. My husband's one of them, so it's near and dear to my heart, okay?
Yes, understood.
I would, you know, to chime in, safety of our employees, safety of everyone here is, like you said, Mayor, is a priority. Hopefully, if we do implement some changes, maybe we can, on the days we have commission meeting, provide the opportunity to have access through both doors. Not on a daily basis, but when we have commission meeting so that, as Mrs. Cruz said, those that want to speak, those that want to be in attendance have a easier way, but obviously not cutting back on any safety protocols, just focusing on the commission meeting days.
And we also, by the way, have a bell at the front door that somebody who needs assistance can ring the bell. We'll be happy to open the door and let them in.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other further comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to Mayor's comments. We've gotten a lot of comments and a lot of emails from residents and business owners in regards to our speed limit signage throughout the city. This is something that I'm, I want to be a little bit careful. I'm putting it on the record, but I want to be careful exactly what I say. There was a detailed memo. Everything is public record in regards to how Public Works and the manager and our city attorney is handling this. I asked, I asked our city attorney to get involved and to engage with this company because I felt, I felt that we needed to be a little bit more heavy-handed. If I could use less words. So I would like an update of what she's able to say in regards to where we are with our speed limit signage and the current, the current opportunities and, you know, when hopefully we could maybe see some sort of correction to the existing concerns.
Yes, Mayor, we've sent a demand letter to the contractor. They have responded to that letter with an offer on how to cure the issue. I've debated it and discussed it with the city manager on Public Works. They're doing some calculations so that we can respond to that contractor to say whether we're going to accept their offer or counter offer with something else, but we're on it.
Okay, perfect. And if I could leave it at that, I'd be very happy. I never, I never try to quell, you know, a chilled speech here in the commission, but they're in the middle of a negotiation, but I wanted people to understand that we're on top of this. Our city attorney's office is dealing with it along with our manager and our Public Works and we're going to get to the bottom of it. And it's a horrific eyesore in regards to just when you talk about city standards. And it's actually an embarrassment because this is something, a piece of legislation that I pushed with the vice mayor, with the vice mayor to change the speed limits from 30 to 25. We worked on it for four years. We got it done at the county. And now basically it looks, sometimes you can't even read the speed limits throughout the city. So thank you for that. And another point. Today I want to remember somebody. I want to remember somebody who I had the privilege of serving with on the board of Coral Gables Hospital, Christina Jimenez. Christina Jimenez served as a president at Coral Gables Hospital and is responsible for leading the development and execution of facilities, the business plan and the day-to-day management decisions and implementation of the facility's long and short-term goals at the hospital. She worked at the hospital, from my understanding, for over 30 years. She joined Coral Gables Hospital as a laboratory medical technologist in September 1985 and held the following key positions while at the hospital. Section Head Hematology, Assistant Laboratory Director, Infectious, Infection Control Practitioner, Quality Performance Improvement, Chief Standards Officer, Associate Administrator, Chief Operating Officer, which developed her professionally for the role of president. I was on that board when I saw her go from, to move into her position a few years ago into, into president. That's when I just started serving on the board. I always knew, I always knew when I dealt with her. Plus, also want to be candid with you, my father, who is a gastroenterologist, has been serving here in this community for over 35 years as a physician, always told me about Christina. And when I mentioned to him that I'd be serving on this board, he, his face lit up. You know, he smiled because of what a professional, what an exceptional human being she was. And I got to taste it and I got to see it firsthand when I worked with her. Incredible, incredible, incredible leader, incredible person, thoughtful, giving, always had a smile on her face. She was a leader. Imagine going and starting at the bottom of a hospital and being the president of a hospital. I mean, that is the, that is the great American success story. But it only happens because a person is willing to work hard and is a person who's willing to lead by example. During her leadership, Coral Gables Hospital has, has been the recipient of the Tenant Circle of Excellence Award for two consecutive years, 2017 and 2018. The facility achieved advanced joint commission accreditation for Orthopedic Center of Excellence, development of the robotics program, 10 and 11 platforms, and earned various recognitions from both the American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association, including get the Guidelines Quality Achievement Awards for heart failure, AFib and stroke diseases. Ms. Jimenez received a proclamation from the City of Miami-Dade County Office proclaiming March 14, 2019 as Christina Jimenez today in honor of all her accomplishments, which have contributed greatly to the enhancement and betterment of our community. Ms. Jimenez along, also received acknowledgements from Becker's Hospital Review and was named its annual list of 143 women hospital and health system leaders in the United States. Ms. Jimenez, a little bit of a background. Earned her Master's in Business Administration with a specialization in Health Administration and Policy from the University of Miami in December 2004 and her Bachelor of Science from Florida International University in 1985. She served on the board of South Florida Ambulatory Surgery Center, USPI, and the FIU Masters in Health Services Administration Advisory Council. To say that she was an exceptional woman falls very, very short. And to see her do her job was very empowering, not only to minorities in this community, but especially to women. She took risks and she put people in positions for success. Christina passed away on November 23rd and it's a loss for our board. She was an incredible, incredible person that I miss a lot. I think about her a lot. I think about how no matter the obstacle, she always led with grace and dignity. So I wanted to take this opportunity to mention her, to mention just what an exceptional person she was. just what an exceptional person she was. And I would like, in the near future, if possible, to potentially name a street after her or recognize her with something that, you know, for future generations. So one day when, let's say my two daughters are driving down a street and they see her name, they're going to ask me, hey dad, who is Christina Jimenez? Explain to me why, you know, why is her name? Or why do we name a park? Or why do we do something after? I think it's important, I think it's important to recognize individuals who selflessly gave for years, for years, and were so tragically taken from us. So I don't know if her family's here, I'm not sure if anybody came from the hospital, but I just wanted to take that opportunity to recognize her and her accomplishments along with her commitment to this community. So thank you.
Mayor, just want to echo everything you said, there's, we actually have an item on consent E two.
Yeah.
Which if, I don't know if you want to pull it now?
Yeah.
And just vote on it now, which is to the point you just made, it's a resolution designating the Zero Block of Santander's Christina Jimenez Way in honor of, of her and everything that you just said.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I appreciate that. I missed that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, there's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Coral Gables, Florida, designating the Zero Block of Santander Avenue Christina Jimenez Way in honor of Coral Gables Hospital's CEO Christina Jimenez and her contributions to the City of Coral Gables and, um, in honor of her work here. So it's before you all today. Happy to answer any questions.
Happy to move it. It's quite an accomplishment that she's done and should be recognized.
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to a much more brighter story. So I've had the privilege of working with Miriam Ramos for many years. I remember five years ago when then Mayor and our then city attorney came to talk to me about an opportunity about potentially elevating Miriam as our city attorney. To me, it was a no-brainer immediately. I knew. It's a parade.
That may have been not be on purpose.
Can't you do something about that or no? So like I was saying was, I remember, I remember that day like it was yesterday. I was, I was saddened to see Craig leave, but it was an opportunity of a lifetime for him. And we're in a very similar circumstance today. When Miriam came to me with me along with the city attorney and, and the, uh, then Mayor to have a conversation about elevating her to, to that, to the city attorney position from Assistant City Attorney, it was a new brainer. I knew immediately that, you know, she would fill that role and do an incredible job because she had been mentored by an incredible individual and she's more than capable on her own right. She has served the city over the last five years. Again, she's been my advocate, she's been the commission's advocate. She has served the city, uh, always putting the city first. All the employees, she has been a person who I hold in incredibly high regard. And through some of the most tough issues that we've dealt with, she's always done it with her head high and she's never compromised the city or her own values. That is very tough to say, very, very tough to say. When you see the things that are happening in the federal government at the state and, you know, politics in itself, this city is that shining city on a hill because of people like you. You're an incredible example. You've made my job a lot easier. You've also made my life very difficult sometimes when we have had full-out discussions, not arguments, in your office on why I want to pass some sort of legislation, but you tell me, Vince, you know, this is not possible. There's a state preemption, you can't get into a fight with the state, you have to go the following route. You've been the voice of reason. And for that, I thank you so much. So there's two things that I want to do. I want to, I want to take the, uh, I want to make a moment here to read a proclamation so we can celebrate you and honor you today. So if you give me a few moments, I'm going to use this paper because my eyesight. And I'm, I will now wear glasses. I am at home, but I'm not going to wear them. So now I have to print things like this. Miriam has over twenty years of government experience, including nine in local government ethics. Before joining the city, she served as Deputy General Counsel and Deputy Advocate for the Miami-Dade Commission on Ethics and Public Trust. She also previously served as an Assistant State Attorney in Miami-Dade County and prosecuted cases in the career criminal and domestic criminal units. In twenty fifteen, she joined the city attorney's office as Deputy City Attorney to then city attorney Craig Lean. And whereas after serving in the role of Deputy City Attorney for approximately two years and a month, she was nominated for the position of City Attorney and since then, her office has continued its reputation for excellence and superb service to the City of Coral Gables government, its residents and visitors. Additionally, she has continued the charge started by her predecessor Craig Lean for principles of inclusion for individuals with autism and other special needs. And whereas in twenty twenty, through one of the toughest times for both the city and the United States during COVID, Miriam and her team ensured that all necessary legislation and procedures were adopted to guide the city's elected and appointed officials through the pandemic. And whereas in twenty twenty-two, Miriam spearheaded efforts to ensure that all attorneys in her office were certified by the Florida Bar in City, County and Government Law, declaring them all experts in, in this area of practice and earning her office distinction of being one hundred percent certified. And whereas notable and honorable mention, in twenty twenty-two, Miriam served as President of the Cuban American Bar Association, CABA, where she has served as Director since twenty fifteen. And during her extensive legal career, Miriam has served on numerous law-related committees and has been recognized and received several awards for her stellar work, ethic and community involvement. And whereas under Miriam's leadership and guidance, she and her team have worked tirelessly to lead the fight in preemption and taking strong legal positions in defense of local control and other policy matters that are priorities for the city's elected and appointed officials. Securing many legal victories for the city, drafted effective and innovative legislation, obtained financial settlements for the benefit of the city, helped preserve the character and aesthetics of our community by implementing the city's unique process for addressing abandoned and troubled properties, assisted in keeping our city safe through the Justice Advocate Program, and provided essential legal support to the city's leaders to ensure the legal integrity of the city's processes and policies. Now therefore, I, Vince Logue, as the Mayor of City of Coral Gables, along with the members of the City Commission, do hereby proudly proclaim January tenth, twenty twenty-three as Miriam Soler Ramos Day in Coral Gables. Very proud day, very proud day. So. Before my colleagues speak, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for the city. Thank you for giving up of your time. Because one thing that people don't realize, don't realize is that, you know, it is a privilege to be the city attorney and it is a privilege to be the city manager and city clerk. But there are many times where these individuals could be in the public sector earning a lot more money and they don't do it for the money. They do it for the love, for the love of the position that they're in, for the love of the city. And a lot of times they stick around and they serve this community to serve the elected officials so that the term comes to an end or one form or another. And we don't give them enough credit. We don't give them enough credit. So I just want to say thank you. Before I give you something, on behalf of the commission and the city, I've only given out four of these since I got elected. I guard these with my life because I think that the key to the city should represent, should represent the highest recognition and the highest standard after someone has done something incredible, heroic, or has served this community. So I want to, I want to give this to you, but at first, I want to watch a video that's been presented, that's going to be presented now for you and I want to have my colleagues, you know, provide a few words.
Hi Mom, I just wanted to say that I'm so proud of everything you did at the city. And I know you made such an impact on so many people's lives there. And I know you can continue to make such an impact in your new job. I love you so much and thank you for everything you do for me and you. We truly love you so much.
Hi Mama, congratulations. Your dedication to public service has been nothing short of an inspiration for me and played no small part in getting me where I am today. I'm so happy for you, so proud of you and I love you.
Miriam, during the almost seven years that I've had the pleasure of working with you, you've served not only as a true leader in our office, but also as a role model and mentor to me personally. I am most grateful, however, for your honest and caring friendship. On behalf of the city attorney's office and myself, I tell you that you will be truly missed. But we wish you the best in your next chapter. We're so excited for you and we know that you will always do great things. Congratulations.
Miriam, congratulations. I'm glad that all of your hard work has paid off. Never met a busier person than you. You were always involved in everything. I want to thank you for all your help and support throughout the years. I want to thank you for your friendship. It has meant the world to me. On behalf of myself and the city clerk's office, I wish you all the best wherever life may take you. Godspeed, my friend.
Hi, Miriam. Congratulations. We are all so happy and so proud of you. You have been a beacon of help for a lot of us in the legal community, but here in the city. And as we bittersweet wish you all the best in the future, I just want to tell you, you have been so much more to lead us, not just as an attorney, but also as a mother, as a wife, as a community leader and done so much for so many. So just remember, whenever you come back into Coral Gables, when your dog goes, put it in a blue bag. Take care, much love.
Hello, Miriam. We have worked together for more than six years. And during that time, I have come to truly appreciate your professionalism and your friendship. You are one of the most competent, hardworking and ethical people that I have ever worked with. All those attributes will guide you well in the private sector and you will be fantastic. Good luck, my friend. All the very, very best. And you will be missed throughout the entire city of Coral Gables. Thank you for everything you've done for us.
Miriam, I want to say thank you for your years of commitment to the city beautiful. And it brings me incredible pride to see you moving forward to your next endeavor, to your next challenge. Five years ago, I nominated you for the position of City Attorney. And let me tell you, those five years have flown and you have done an incredible job representing the city beautiful. We've tackled many tough issues and you've always addressed them with dignity and respect, always putting the city first. I want to say thank you to not only yourself, but also to your husband and your two children for allowing you to make such a rigorous commitment to the city beautiful and for you always being available to all our needs. Wishing you the best and Godspeed. Thank you very much.
So before we open it up to the commission, I know that everybody has comments and I love to hear from the family if they'd like to say a few words. We have a special guest that would like to say a few words. Mr. Clerk, do you have, do you have this individual teed up?
Uh, yes, sir. He's on Zoom and he's ready to speak.
All right, a man who needs no introduction. A man who needs no introduction and always has very enlightening things to say. Mr. Craig Lean. Wow.
Very much, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, I'm, listen, can I say something first really quickly?
Of course.
The federal government's been tough, man. You got gray hair. We miss you, my brother. We miss you.
It's true.
We miss you.
Silver, you know, silver hair.
Yes. You look wonderful, Greg.
Mr. Mayor, it's an honor and pleasure to be here. You know, um, I'd start by just saying a few names. You know, Simple, Spooner, Zoner, Hernandez, Lean, Ramos. You know, there haven't been too many city attorneys of Coral Gables in modern times. It's a position that comes with a lot of power and importance and responsibility. And, you know, ultimately, it's about being a servant leader, being city attorney and, you know, I can't think of someone who has done better in the post than Miriam. And, and it's a pretty, pretty strong list, if I may say so myself, but Miriam has been there. She works hard. She, uh, is brilliant. She is a problem solver. She was the best successor I could imagine. You know, when we, you know, Mr. Mayor, you remember this, when we were building the office and, you know, I'd like to give greetings to you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, uh, city manager, city attorney, city clerk. I'm not, I'm not used to this anymore. I just said that at the beginning, but you know, to, to, Miriam, I just want to thank her for fulfilling the trust of this office, issuing the city attorney opinions, leading the office, building the office, making it a board-certified office. And like I said, being the best successor that I could imagine. You know, I've, I've been following her in the office in the city. I have a vested interest in the city. I love the city. And to me, it's when I think of like the city on a hill, the shiny city on a hill, like they say, I think of Coral Gables. It's the only city where you can, that I know of, where you can go to city hall, meet with the mayor and each commissioner and the city manager and the city attorney and the city clerk all in one day and they'll hear you. And you can speak at the commission meeting and, and have your voice heard like we saw today. It's something very special. It's a place where you can serve on a board. And, uh, in fact, you could, you know, there's, I, I'm not sure how many there are now, but there's twenty to thirty of them, as I recall. And, uh, Miriam is the attorney for all of them. Of course, sometimes she acts through other attorneys as well. But, you know, that is a tremendous responsibility. So anyway, I don't want to take too many words. I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me say something and I just want to express to my successor, as she moves on to the next step, job well done. And you know what else is well done? That you prepared a successor for yourself. We'll see what happens in the vote today, but I just want to express my strong support for Christina Suarez for being an outstanding deputy city attorney and, and being, you know, that was the goal. That was my goal, similar in the county attorney's office, to build an office where you could have internal succession, committed to apolitical, uh, legal guidance and leadership, and I believe that's been achieved. So Miriam, that's on you. You've done that. And thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. And you know, one last thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you for what you've done in the area of disability. It was mentioned by the mayor. Making an accessible city is so incredibly important. It's something I'm devoting my career and life to. And when I look back on the Gables, I always use the Gables as an example, always. Because, because the Gables is a place where, that cares about accessibility, cares about its citizens. That's so incredibly important. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you again. Miriam, outstanding work. I'm so happy for you.
Greg, thank you so much. We're always grateful to hear from you. We miss you and we love you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on.
I have another, another individual who I'd like to give the floor to who does, does not need any introduction. Mayor Raúl Valdez Fawley, who has a few words and we're blessed to have him here with us. Mayor, good morning, sir. The floor is yours.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Um, I'm glad to be after Craig Lean. When he came to see me and told me that he was leaving, I said, I don't want you to leave. You're so good. I don't want you to leave. I'm going to accuse you of moral turpitude when they ask me about your credentials. But he left and we have Miriam as his successor. And she did a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful job. We did great things, passing the new zoning code, amending it and updating it. Miriam, you have been a wonderful city attorney, but also a wonderful person, a wonderful colleague. And I am very, very glad that I have served the City of Coral Gables with you at my side, helping me. And, uh, we love you, Miriam, and wish you the best in your future endeavors. Thank you, Miriam.
Mayor, thank you for joining us. Wishing you the best.
Thank you.
Now that my colleagues on the floor. The floor is yours. Vice Mayor?
Sorry. I just want to say, one of the, the best things anyone can ever say about someone in government, uh, because there are too few of them, is that they are a calming effect. You, Miriam, are a calming effect. No matter what, how heated the issue, no matter how heated the people, you keep us grounded. You keep us focused. You give us hope that things can work out. I can't tell you how many times, or, or you know, I would just and sort of walk into your office and sit down and talk about the law, but talk about our city, but talk about life. You were able to marry and merge. You were able to marry and merge the practice of law, governance, with real life. Real life being your family. We always talked about family. And that's something I always admired and respected about you. For someone who has so much responsibility, that someone that has a great reputation, well deserved, and doing such a professional and excellent job, and all the other things that you do, you always put family first. And that's something to be admired, and that's something that hopefully everyone in the community can, can replicate in their own lives. And, um, and I, I think one of the nicest moments in my time as a Commissioner is we were going over legislation, old legislation, and I actually was right on one issue when we were discussing. The rest of the time, you were right. And the visual I'll always have, because I always referenced it after leaving your office or before leaving your office, is that you always should have a can, like the character in Peanuts, Lucy, the psychiatrist is in. So everybody comes in and sits in front of your desk, just put in a quarter, and then they can talk with you. But it's been a pleasure and honor. And quite honestly, you're one of the finest professionals, finest attorneys, but one of the finest human beings I've ever known.
All right, I'm happy to hear. So, you know, this is, this is a tough one because it's bittersweet to see Miriam go, obviously. I keep telling myself how happy I am for her, for the opportunity, because it keeps me kind of focused on that part of it. But all joking aside, you know, we, this is a hard job, you know, and, and having Miriam in this role has been, for us, a source of huge comfort. See, I'm not the only one. Let me tell you. You know how many times I would walk into Miriam's office to talk about, and I'm saying this because you mentioned it, Kirk. Commissioner, excuse me. I would walk into Miriam's office and talk about something that, a legal matter, I would need her guidance. I'm the only one here who's not an attorney. And I would ask for just, just some guidance or, you know, a path moving forward. And we would end up on a tangent conversation for an hour, asking her for advice and talking about life and talking about family and talking about the city and talking about a litany of other crazy things that she would listen to me talk about. And she never once ever told me, hey, I have a meeting to get to. Hey, I can't talk about this. Hey, my family's calling. Her husband would call and I'd be like, take the call, take the call, take the call. She'd be ending the call. She'd be ending the call, man, take the call. No. Her daughter would call, her son would call, who, by the way, are exceptional children. I mean, incredible. I mean, that's a testament to the individuals that we're talking about today. You saw her son, who's a cadet. You know, never not answer the phone call. One day at nine o'clock at night, at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night, she was always there for the city. Always there to listen. Class, dignity, respect, put the city first. So, trust me. I know what we all felt.
I take a lot of pride in trying to, you know, communicate well and say things eloquently. But I'm at a bit of a loss for words today. No, joking aside, you've, you've been a good friend more than anything else. And I appreciate that. We wear a lot of different hats. As a Commissioner, I work with you as an attorney. This is a, this is a loss for the city because you are an exceptional attorney. And because of the level of integrity and character, ethics, I could go on and on. But it's also a happy day for you because it's a good opportunity for you, for your family, something you've earned over the course of your career. As a, as a lawyer, I've had the privilege of working with you on a professional level in a variety and an array of very complex situations. And you've always, you know, guided us in a way that was humble because you, you, you have to come forth with an opinion. You also have to hear us out. And you have to be willing to accommodate and adjust to policymakers and effectuate it in a way that complies with the law. And that's a harder task professionally than I think a lot of people would appreciate. As a person, as I said, you're exceptional. Kirk touched on something that I was going to touch on. Probably the thing I admire you the most for though is the parent you are. Man.
That's what's most important.
Yeah, probably. Let's just say, I, I wish you would like write a book on parenting because I think your kids are the best testament to you that there could be. So I'm just going to leave it there.
Commissioner, Mayor, anything to say?
Miriam, I really enjoyed my time working with you when Craig was the City Attorney. We did a lot of really good things in terms of the Justice Advocate Program, which was trying to get, make sure that criminals that preyed on Coral Gables residents, that they were, we followed up, made sure that the witnesses didn't feel intimidated and could actually participate in the investigation so that it would reduce crime in the Gables. I think that was a very successful, very unique program that we worked very closely on. Also on squatters and settlements and abandoned properties. Those are the things we worked on very carefully. And on disability issues, autism particularly, if I recall. So I didn't have the privilege, the last four, the five years I've been retired, but I followed your work and I think you've done a terrific job. And I wish you all the best going forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
My colleagues have said a lot about you. And I'd like to just point out some additional things. You know, being an attorney for a lengthy period of time, I think this is, you're making the right choice at the right time for you at this juncture in your career. But I've also enjoyed immensely your ability to not bring politics into the decisions, you know, the advice that you give. And it's helped us, and I know it's helped me and helped each one of our colleagues. You don't get this in other cities. And you've been, you're special. The firm that's going to get you is going to be extremely lucky because it's a difficult balance, balancing family and balancing the responsibilities of a very important career. I've lived it. I know how difficult that is. But your office and Craig Lean's example as well, and you've set an example for your colleagues that will step into your very big shoes. We should be very, very proud of. And residents should be considered blessed. I recall before I ran for commission that it was Craig Lean that came to my house to check out a driveway thing that I needed an exception for. That is the level of detail that your office, it provides a service to residents, that it's not just the elected leaders. It's just not the city manager. But it's down to everybody's driveway, everybody's plans for their home. When there's an issue, you touch upon that. And we're truly blessed. We're really, really, truly blessed, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Manager?
I think, I think I've said a number of things on, on the video. But one thing is, we all know what a great attorney Miriam is. We all know what a hard worker she is. But I've been in cities where the, where the appointees do not get along. And that's terrible. And one of the things that I have to say, and one final thing I have to say, Miriam, I trust you. And that is what makes the city function the way it does. Thank you. Thank you. It's been a privilege working with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Unless the clerk has something else to say, or any else to say you'd like?
Just say thank you. Thank you for always being there. You were always a friend. You always picked up the phone. The mayor was right. The time didn't matter. It didn't matter if it was a weekend. You're always there for us.
On vacation?
That's true. So thank you for everything.
If anybody would like to say anything else? Family? I know you would. Please.
So I just wanted to thank the city. I wanted to thank every one of you. She loves working here. She, she loved every minute of it. She loves working with you guys. She loves serving the city, this community. She took, she takes her job extremely serious. And yes, you're right, she is the best mother a child can have. I'm super blessed. But she's also a phenomenal wife, person. And I'm very proud of you. And thank you for being you. You're an incredible person. She's going to miss you guys. And the only reason, I'm going to give you a little insight. The only reason she's leaving is not because she doesn't like this job. It's because she has a pursuit to continue to grow. She wants to continue to grow. That's what motivates her, besides, obviously, her family and, and, and everything else. But she just wants to continue to grow. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, my friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Miriam, I am so grateful, not only for your mentorship, your leadership, but for always being the kind of leader that has empowered our office, has motivated us, has maintained an environment that is a pleasure, a true pleasure to work in. It's always been positive, even when we've worked on challenging projects, on tough issues. It's always been amazing to come to work and to work with you. We are going to miss you so much. We thank you for, again, for your leadership. We wish you the best. And I'm so grateful for your friendship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miriam, I'll be very brief because I don't want my mascara to run in front of the whole commission. But thank you so much for everything you've done, for me personally, for our office, for the example you've set as an attorney, as a mother, as a wife, like Ozzy said. We love you so much. And I don't know what I'm going to do without your smiling face every day and coming in, seeing you on Zoom when we worked from home when I was eight months pregnant on Zoom. What a, what a cheerleader you were. So we'll love you and miss you. And I'm so grateful for every opportunity you've given me in our office in the city. You have encouraged us to, to learn, to grow. And I'm so grateful for your example. And I, I know you're going to kill it at your next job. And we're going to miss you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Listen, it's open to the floor. Anybody would like to say a few words? We welcome you.
Thank you, Israel Reyes, the Reyes Law Firm. I'm the police legal advisor, as you all know, for the Coral Gables Police Department. I, I was in a unique position. I've been in a unique position to work with Miriam in a lot of capacities. She used to appear in front of me when I was a circuit court judge. I knew back then that she was very special. And she had some very, she was a very talented attorney. I then had the opportunity to work sort of against her when I represented a client in the, in her work with the Commission on Ethics. I saw another side of Miriam, which enhanced my, my belief in her abilities as an attorney and as a person because of her ethics. And then, of course, when she came here, I had the opportunity to work with her and been working with her and her staff in many issues involving the police department and some other issues as well. Miriam is often referred to me as her mentor. And you know, the, the secret here is that, well, she thought I was mentoring her, she was actually mentoring me. So I want to thank you for that. And I have to stop too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you so much. Anyone else? Come on up, Gus.
Although I suspect I'm going to be much worse than the Vice Mayor, but I'm going to make an attempt. Throughout everyone's career, bosses are a dime a dozen. They come in every shape and form. Very few times do you really see a leader, somebody who leads by example, somebody that would never ask you to do something they wouldn't do themselves. That's very hard to find. And, and Miriam, I think you, you exemplify that to the ultimate degree. You have been a mentor, both in my work life, personal life. I'm a director at GABA because of her leadership. Can't say it any other way. I look forward to your continued success. And I hope that, I mean, you're, you're going to be stuck with me for at least another couple of years. So you're going to see me a lot more than most. But I, I, I look forward to that, to that journey. I think you're going to do amazing things. And I thank you for your friendship more than anything else. Thank you, Gus. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Naomi?
By the way, I think what we've confirmed today is that us guys are much bigger wimps than they are.
Don't speak too soon.
Kirk's not the only one in the room.
Miriam, it's bittersweet. We're so happy for you to take on this next chapter. But you've been an amazing leader. And we're going to miss you tremendously. From a personal perspective, I owe you so much. I would not be an Assistant City Attorney if not for you. I wouldn't be board-certified if not for you. You set the bar so high for all of us. You teach us daily to be ethical, to not abandon our values, to do the right thing. And it's, these are lessons that will stay with us eternally. And I've been very blessed to have two amazing bosses. But I'm, I'm truly going to miss you. I know you're not going far. Just think of us always as your extended family. And we'll be here for you, and I know you'll be there for us. So what more can I say but thank you? And I'm going to sit down so I don't cry.
Thank you. Thank you, Naomi. Thank you. With that being said, I'd like to take this opportunity. I think Naomi said it best. You are part of our extended family. This city is just beyond proud to not only have you have worked for us for five years, but to have your brand, your style of leadership, you know, having led us the way to where we are today. I can't thank you enough on behalf of the commission, on behalf of all the employees, the residents, the business community. Thank you so much for being so generous with your time and your commitment to the city. We love you. And this is a small token of appreciation. It is the highest honor that we can give here in the city and is the key to the city. And this is the fourth one that I've given. And if I could give you something that could hold you in higher regard, I would. But this is where my, my limits. And I can't thank you enough. Thank you and God bless you. And this is only the beginning. I know you will be back in service soon. It may take a few years. But I'm looking forward to those moments. Thank you. Thank you, Miriam.
And having been living for so long.
I'm appreciative of the pause in time so that I could get myself together somewhat. First of all, this was way too much. I didn't expect this kind of tribute. I am beyond humbled and undeserving of this kind of tribute. The Key to the City, my own day. I can't even, I'm gonna process this for many months to come. Serving as City Attorney has been the greatest and biggest honor of my professional career. Something I will forever be thankful to have been able to do. I'm thankful to a lot of people and a lot of things. I like to live my life in gratitude because I believe that that is the best way to live our lives. And we are really, really so incredibly blessed. I wanna thank Craig Lean for bringing me in as Deputy City Attorney, which opened the door for allowing me to serve in this position. To the current mayor and this commission, thank each and every one of you, not only for what you've said today, but for your support of me, both personally and professionally. I consider you all friends and mentors. Thank you to Mayor Valdez Fowley, who was mayor when I was appointed to the attorney. To all the commissioners who I have served under. It has been my greatest honor. Peter and Billy, thank you for being absolute gentlemen, amazing, dedicated, ethical public servants and dear friends. You're not getting rid of me. To department directors, those who are here and those who are not today, those who are here and those who worked here before and have left to move on to other things. You are stellar examples of what true public servants are. In particular, there's some that I worked with most closely. For whatever reason, I'd like to just call out by name those who have become friends. Chief Hurdak, Chief De La Rosa, Yoli, Diana Hermes, Surami, Raquel, Zeta, Alex Kamundi, who would find me in connectivity in Africa if I needed it. But really, there's just too many to name. To the community leaders who have had the opportunity to work with, Mark and Mary and so many others. Thank you for your support, both internal and external. Again, to staff, stay true to yourselves and your convictions. Drown out the external noise. Know that what you're doing is honorable and worthwhile. And know that we appreciate what you do each day. We do, the residents do, and the world at large does. Stay strong and know that that is true. To my mentors, like Craig and like Izzy who are here and many others, who have always guided me with love and patience. I would not be where I am today if it were not for those people. To my office, a superb group of lawyers with heart and conviction, who are going to do amazing things. I'm so proud of each and every one of you. Thank you for supporting me, for your loyalty, for making me grow, for teaching me so much. To my committed staff members, the most amazing team, my work family. I would not be without who I am today without each of you. In particular, to Bridget. I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me together, to be my best friend at the office. This job is hard, and it cannot be done without a right hand like you. I will forever be grateful. Sorry, please bear with me. To my crackerjack team of outside special counsel, who litigate so effectively on behalf of the city and do it with heart. And finally, to Ozzy, Andres, Isabella, and my entire family of friends, who have been with me every step of the way and love me unconditionally. Nothing I have done in life would mean anything without any of you. Now that I'm a mess, I'm done. I have some other words to say after our next item. I just wanna thank you again and apologize for losing it a little bit. It's a big day.
It's contagious.
Mayor, I think we have something for Miriam. She's not only taking the key to the city, but she's also taking City Hall with her.
Mr. Manager, go please.
I love it.
No further other comments. Miriam, we wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Godspeed. And we look forward to having you here once again. With that being said, like they say, the show must go on. The show must go on. And I'm going to transition by mentioning that I wrote a memo on January 9th. And it is a public record, and I will read it into the record again. As all of you know, after almost eight years of exemplary and faithful service to the city, including more than five years as the City Attorney, City Attorney Miriam Soler Ramos has submitted her letter of resignation. I am extremely grateful and proud of the great work that Miriam has accomplished for the city. And she will be missed, incredibly missed. Given Miriam's departure, I have asked the City Clerk to add an item on the January 10th commission agenda under Mayor's comments for the appointment of Deputy City Attorney Christina M. Suarez to the post of City Attorney. Christina has served the city of Coral Gables since 2016, where she joined the City Attorney's Office under Craig Lean as an Assistant City Attorney. In 2017, she was named Deputy City Attorney and City Prosecutor and served with high distinction in that role for over five years. As Deputy City Attorney, Christina has not only worked closely with the City Commission and drafted resolutions, ordinances, and legal opinions, but she has served as counsel to the Construction Regulation Board and the Trial Board. She has prosecuted cases before the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate and before the Code Enforcement Board. And she has covered City Commission meetings as Acting City Attorney. Christina manages special counsel in matters including litigation, code enforcement, abandoned real property, and telecommunications matters amongst many others. She regularly provides counsel to city departments, including, for example, matters involving real estate, land use, construction, procurement, and public art. Christina also oversees the City Attorney's Office, Office's Legal Internship Program, supervising interns from local and out-of-state law schools. On various occasions, Christina has served as Acting City Attorney in the City Attorney's absence. More significantly, however, is the excellent level of service that Christina provides, not only to the City Commission, but also to the city's residents and visitors. Christina is board certified by the Florida Bar in the city, county, and local government law. She serves as editor of the Agenda and the newsletter of the city, County and Local Government Law Section, as well as having served on several Florida Bar committees. A graduate of Florida International University College of Law, she was presented the FIU Alumni Association Torch Award for Community Leadership in 2018. As you can see, Christina is extremely qualified to take charge at the next city of Coral Gables, City Attorney. She has the knowledge, the experience, and the commitment to continue serving the city and is the best candidate for the post of City Attorney. In addition, I'm grateful to the City Attorney and her predecessor Craig Lean for having the best interest of the city in mind when they set the groundwork for a seamless process for succession in the City Attorney's Office, following the model of the County Attorney's Office that has been successful for decades. Here at the city, we have seen firsthand the benefits and continuity that comes with selecting the second-in-command as successor, as has been the case with our current city manager, city attorney, and our city clerk. Finally, this plan of succession not only ensures we continue to have the most qualified individual to lead the office, but also maintains the political neutrality of the City Attorney's Office. For this additional reason, I'm fully supportive of the appointing Christina, I'm fully supportive of appointing Christina as our next City Attorney. Given my support for appointing Christina to the post of City Attorney and pursuant to my authority under Section 228B3 of the City Code, I have negotiated proposed terms and benefits packages for her employment, which will be set forth in a resolution that I have here before me, and I will sponsor a Tuesday City Commission meeting. That is the end of the memo. The resolution has been sent before all of you, has been provided to you. And I welcome your comments, your guidance. Again, this is a team effort. I can speak about Christina, I know we can, all of us can, I know the employees can. But at the end of the day, I put my faith and confidence in people like Miriam, in people like Craig Lean. I blindly trust the manager and my city clerk. These are people who I've worked with, who I've seen them put their hand in the fire on behalf of the city. I always knew that Christina would be a good option for City Attorney. It's a seamless transition. She's more than competent, more than capable. But we, as a city, we have to be sure and we have to make this decision in the public. This has to be something that has to be vetted. I'd like to hear your opinion on the matter. This is, I don't, I'm not the only voice here, we're five. I welcome the city manager, I welcome the city clerk's opinion in regards to his decision.
I'd like to start, I've worked closely with Christina in many matters. In my time as a commissioner, her dedication, her professionalism, no politics involved, always looking out for the best of our community, the best of our city. Someone I trust. So I wanna thank everyone trust. Best thing I can say is a beautiful reflection of Miriam in terms of everything you want in a person, everything you want as a leader, everything you want as a City Attorney. I think the city would benefit greatly that we can transition and have our next City Attorney be Christina.
Thank you, sir.
I agree wholeheartedly. You know, I give a lot of credit, I think, starting really with Craig, but also definitely, you know, and I think to the next level through Miriam's tenure as City Attorney. This office, as much as really any department in the city, has done a phenomenal job of having, you know, sort of a succession plan, if you will, of building everybody up. You know, it brings a big smile to my face to see the picture of your team that they showed there with everybody wearing blue. And I know the pride and the joy that it was for you to have everybody board certified. And that's not just because it's, you know, a certificate or a trophy that you put on a shelf. It's because you're building up your team. And I think that's why you see the feeling and the reaction that you have from people on your team today. And it's why it gives me a lot of faith and confidence that, you know, Christina is absolutely the right choice for this. And what I would just, you know, say to Christina is, I think, you know this, you just talked about how high a bar Miriam has set. And I would say that, if anything, today just set it a little higher because you don't elicit this kind of reaction by being a good lawyer. You're all phenomenal lawyers. This is because you go above and beyond that. And so I think you're being afforded that opportunity. I know, I know how seriously you take it. And so I have no doubt that, you know, you're gonna step into this role seamlessly and that the team around you, which is a phenomenal team, will be there to support you the way that you all have supported Miriam. I support this wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I support the appointment. I think that the fact that Craig Lean and Miriam have recommended you and a lot of people have called me and support people that I trust, people that I believe in, that's good enough for me. And I always believed that in general, that's good to promote from within. You understand the city, you understand our issues. It's always better to take people from internal organizations, understand what we're about and our values. And you've had great mentors. So I'm very much in favor of you. I will support you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Having been critiqued by, the majority of us are lawyers up here and aware of what it takes to do the type of service that you do. Christina, I think, speaks volumes about your capacity. I've had also opportunities to work with you. And, you know, the politics aren't in there, your personal opinion's not in there. It's just, this is what we can do. And this is how we can accomplishment, accomplish it. So each and every one of us get to try to accomplish the projects that we would like to do while we have our tenure here as well. You're extremely highly qualified. And with that, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution appointing Christina.
I'll second.
So let me just read the headline. A resolution appointing Christina M. Suarez as City Attorney of the city of Coral Gables, further approving salary and benefits packages set forth herein. This is a public record. We have a motion, we have a second. Mr. Clerk?
Commissioner Anderson?
You have, Madam City Attorney?
After the motion, then I'm gonna say something.
Yeah, okay. Great.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Christina has been an exemplary deputy who's made the success of this, of our office possible. And quite frankly, has a lot to do with mine. She's a terrific lawyer, she's analytical, hardworking, committed, and ethical. She's a terrific person. She's thoughtful, kind, supportive, and a team player. Christina will lead with strength and compassion, and she'll continue the legacy of our office of protecting the city and its elected officials and employees. Stephanie, Gus, Naomi, Bridget, Anga, Catherine, you will continue to soar under Christina's leadership. Of that, I have no doubt. Christina will always be able to count on my counsel, although I know she will not need it. Christina, it is my absolute pleasure to hand over the best City Attorney's Office in the country to you.
Madam City Attorney, in our next commission meeting?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Today is truly bittersweet, we've heard it multiple times today. I am deeply honored and humbled to have the opportunity to continue serving the city of Coral Gables and in the role of City Attorney. As I mentioned before, I'm extremely grateful to Miriam for her mentorship, her guidance over the last six and a half years. I will miss having my friend in the office directly below me and dialing her extension multiple times a day. But trust me, Miriam, the legacy that you created and the lessons that you taught me will continue. Looking ahead, I know I have very big shoes to fill. Miriam and her predecessor Craig Lean did establish the best City Attorney's Office in the nation. But I look forward to leading the office and continuing to serve the city, its residents, its visitors, business owners. Mayor and Commissioners, I especially look forward to continue working with you, to assisting each of you and fulfilling your initiatives, continuing to champion home rule, authority, as my predecessors have so bravely done, and to doing my part to make the city beautiful, even better every day. I'm proud of the collaborative relationships I have developed through the years with the city manager, the city clerk, the ACM, the department directors and staff. And I look forward to working with them in my new role, as our office has always done so well. I'm excited to start this next chapter. I thank you profoundly for giving me this opportunity, but also for your trust and your faith in me. I'll make you proud.
Thank you.
You know, I just wanted to add, and I don't wanna belabor the point, but when we talk about a succession plan, and it's not just having a good person that's the next sort of highest-ranking person. I want people to understand, every agenda meeting I've had for I'm not sure how many years now, Christina's sat in on.
Yeah, great point.
This is not just, you know, hey, the next highest-ranking person in the office gets to sort of get into the role. Christina's been there every step of the way. Learning, participating, helping, you name it. So it's, again, it's not, I want people out there, residents, you know, who are here, okay, well, the City Attorney's leaving, the next person is getting the job. This, it's, one, it's not a foregone conclusion that the next person gets the job at all. This is something that Christina has earned. So I think that's important. But part of earning that has been that she's been put in a position to earn it. And I wanted to highlight the point about the agenda and all the other thousands of things that you guys do throughout the year. But that in particular, from my perspective, every single item I've been prepared on for a City Commission meeting, again, I'm not sure how many years it's been now. every single item I've been prepared on for a city commission meeting, again, I'm not sure how many years it's been now, Christina has sat in on and participated in that process, and that gives us, and me for sure, the utmost confidence that she's more than ready to take on this job and do a great job. So just wanted to add that.
Commissioner?
On a lighter note, and you know me by now, and you know where I'm headed with this.
Don't.
Yes, you know very well where I'm headed with this. So, one thing that Christina, Christina and I have in common, we're both diehard Miami Dolphin fans. We often bump into each other in the parking area before the game. And magically, 2023 starts, and in 48 hours, the Dolphins make the playoffs, and you become the city attorney. It's turning out to be a pretty good year. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, for nothing else, I think today so far has been a positive morning, and we move on with the agenda. Congratulations. Miriam, we'll miss you. I can't say it enough. Thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you.
We're blessed to have you. And to your family, on to the next chapter. Thank you so much. We appreciate everything you've done and, and your support of, of Miriam.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I think we have a, oh, we have a gift.
That's right, I forgot. We have, we have a.
Our new city attorney?
Ah, Miriam, please.
Beautiful.
All right.
There we go.
Picture of the fly.
All right. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Moving, moving on to the consent agenda.
So we've already voted on agenda item E2, but prior to the vote, it's top on the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes additional discussion or review of any item on the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Now, may I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on to item F1. Item ordinances on second reading.
Yes, Mayor, item F1. Is an ordinance of the city commission dissolving the Business Improvement District of Coral Gables as a special district, providing for repealer severability clause, providing for an effective date, Ms. Rockmorton.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is, item is on second reading. There have been no changes since the first reading. As you all know, this is an administrative step in the dissolution of the bid necessary.
Can I get a, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move it.
Second. Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Before we move on to F2, I just want to thank Miriam on this, Miriam and her team, our city attorney, excuse me, and her, and her team for really working as diligently as possible in all efforts to try to resolve this issue. We've done as much as we possibly can on our part. But obviously, the last thing, we wanted to find an amicable resolution, but we are what we are. Moving forward. Item F2?
F2 is an ordinance of the city commission providing for a tax amendment to the city of Coral Gables official zoning code by amending Article 15. Notices to include mail notice to all properties within the applicable mailing distance, providing for severability clause, repealer provision, codification, providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This is the city attorney, Augusta Viles. So there have been no changes since first reading, but if you have any questions or any comments, feel free, please let me know.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
I'll second it. Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, moving on to F3. Thank you, Gus.
Please do.
Go ahead. Item F3?
F3 is an ordinance of the city commission providing for tax amendments to the city of Coral Gables official zoning code by amending Article 15. Notices to require online publication of historical determination letters in Article 8, historic preservation revising process for historical determination letters, providing for severability clause, codification, providing for an effective date. Ms. Viles?
Same as before, no changes. Here to have any comments or questions.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Before we move on, thank you, sir. Before we move on to item F4, ordinance is on first reading. We're going to take a 10-minute break to go to the bathroom.
Thank you.
Immediately. Immediately. He is, he's working hard. Working hard, we have an event coming up on the 31st. All right, you ready?
I wore one of those last night, for the first time in a while, because I had to, my mother-in-law's in the hospital.
Oh my God.
I had COVID. Took medicine and her blood pressure.
Had to go to the hospital.
Took it to the doctors last night.
Should have called me, but my dad's there.
He was, he was fine.
Call me!
I know, but you know what, we got it.
Mr. Clerk, item F4.
F4 is an ordinance of the city commission providing for the tax amendment to the city of Coral Gables officials.
F4 is an ordinance to the City Commission providing for the text amendments to the City of Corribles officials zoning code Article 10 Parking Section 10-109 Payment in lieu of remote off-street parking to revise remote parking and payment in lieu processes requirements and fee structure providing for severability clause repealer codification providing for an effective date.
Good morning, Jennifer Garcia, City Planner. And so today we are trying to clarify the fee structure for remote parking and also clarifying the review process. So we're keeping the boundaries the same, it's now still going to be allowed in the Central Business District, the CBD, as well as the Design Industrial, Design Innovation District down south and along 100 feet of Ponte León, that's all staying the same. So are the requirements within 1,000 feet of where you're requesting it, that's all staying the same as well. And the fees are staying the same, the fees being 12,500 per space for citywide as in the CBD and along ponds, 10,000 per space in the Design Innovation District as well as 5,500 for Miracle Mile because we require remote parking on Miracle Mile. What we're changing is, we're changing and clarifying what the original intent of this was, right? So the original intent was that you would be paying for the remote parking and the payment in lieu is something that was only for special conditions. If your remote parking fell through them, or if you're only requesting a handful of spaces, you could do a payment in lieu which is paying out of the requirement. And we're also clarifying the intent of the review process, which is if you had less than 25 spaces, then it could be reviewed administratively. If you had more than 25 spaces, then that requires commission approval through the conditional use process. I have a few slides that helps diagram this, yes, there it is, perfect. Like I said, 10, less than 10 spaces would be a payment in lieu, a payment in lieu is that you pay out of the system. The less than 25 spaces would be the Development Review, sorry, Development Services Director would review administratively and then more than 25 spaces, that would require the conditional use process. So just to explain, you can do option one always, that's not changing, you can provide your required parking onsite. But this is a remote parking, so you're, you could have some parking onsite, but you're trying to encourage the use of our parking that's already built in our, in our city, which we have a lot of parking that's being underutilized. And the payment in lieu is only if your remote parking falls through, there's no way you can try and get that anywhere else, or you have such a little amount, a handful, that's not worth the city's time to follow your covenants. So this is a diagram that explains the process, we're trying to clarify the process. So you start with the remote parking request, right? So you go up for the more than 25 spaces that requires a conditional use process, that's going through planning and zoning, through the commission for approval, and then you get that approved. If you have less than 25 spaces, it's reviewed administratively, and if you have less than 10 spaces, then you could, if you want to do a payment in lieu. And if your approved spaces for the remote parking falls through and you cannot figure out a way to have that accommodated, that can be reviewed administratively and figure out if that makes sense to do the payment in lieu. So I hope that clarifies something, we're here to answer any questions.
Let me just clarify, the payment in lieu is also a cure, it's double, it's double the cost. So if you were to pay 12,500, payment in lieu would be 25,000.
Is that typical from what you see, other types of programs like to have that kind of distinction between the price and the payment in lieu option?
And Vice Mayor, that goes to our parking fund, so it, so it would, it would help with our smart parking plan and our future Corribles Parking Authority, so it's, so it's very similar, yes.
Right, but is that, is that fee structure where you're saying it's double the amount, is that sort of, I don't, you know, what, what do you see out there in other similar?
It's very similar because you're, you're removing the necessity to go out and lease parking. So you're removing that, that, that cost now, this does, does not affect our, our parking on street which is 42,000.
And it really depends on what municipality wants to encourage, if they want to encourage remote parking and utilizing the available parking that they have already built, then they want to incentivize the remote parking. If they want to, it's a very, very urban area and they want to incentivize payment in lieu, then that's a decision they can make.
Right, so here the remote parking is half the cost of the payment in lieu?
Yes.
Which is what we're obviously trying to incentivize.
Right, we're trying to push the remote parking so we can use our smart parking plans to...
Yes.
Uh, the only other question I had was, I know when we've had other sort of similar changes to requirements, like how are we dealing with projects that are already sort of in the pipeline, you know, and where you kind of cut that off, whether it's...
That wasn't even my exact question, whether it's design review, whether it's BOA, you know, I know we've talked about that in other contexts in the past, how are you dealing with it?
I don't think there's anything in it now, in the past the commission has decided either first BOA or final BOA.
Preliminary or BOA, right?
If I could, just to go off the Vice Mayor and, you know, he... That was it, that was the one, but... I think we need to consider that between first and second reading.
Yeah.
And I'd like for staff, through the manager, with the manager to present with us some sort of kind of guidance or a cutoff point. I just want to be fair, I don't, I don't want to be, I don't want, I don't want people to come back and say, hey, listen, I was on the precipice, or I had just passed this board, you know, I'm moving on to this next stage, now I have to start from scratch. So whatever the board recommends, whatever staff recommends, the manager recommends, but I think there has to be some points that people can have, like an even playing field. I don't, I mean, your opinion is welcome, I'd love to know what you think of it.
I mean, right now, like, like Miriam said, that is at the BOA preliminary approval. I don't, I can't think of any that have preliminary approval that are in the pipeline to go to, go to Planning and Zoning Commission, they all are kind of stuck at the BOA process.
Have a suggestion on that.
There is, um, we do have a precedent, we've used for the building code, the final BOA approval, from a building code perspective, because that, that's a requirement of the city and it's a substantial requirement. And so technically speaking, the, for the building code, it would be the, the application for the projects. We look at the final BOA approval because there is a substantial requirement as a final BOA, as a final application from a building code perspective. We can look at this as a final application, or we can look at it as a preliminary, an approved preliminary review. But I, I think we need to have something set like that, and what we've looked at before was for zoning the, the preliminary review, approval of a preliminary review, and for the building code, a final BOA approval, because you, you've got a state statute to, to deal with. So if that's acceptable, that's something that we can put in for second reading.
I have a suggestion, can we put, I know in resolutions we do, I would imagine ordinances we do, can we put an effective date further down the road so we don't come, you know, across this problem or this possible issue? Just make the effective date July 1st or September 1st, that way we clear whatever's in the pipeline and the people know ahead of time with proper notice that on this date we're going to move forward. And obviously, you know, using that, I think perhaps an effective date a little bit further down will clear up whatever confusion there could be.
This ordinance should not affect the project itself, it's going to affect the payment, but it will not affect the project, whether if you remove parking, if you have remote parking for, for 50 cars, you'll still be able to get remote parking for 50 cars.
Yeah, but the, still, the economics always affect the project, right? So, you know, just, what, where, again, you could, there's several options of sort of where you stick that stake in the ground of before and after, and let's just, on second reading, come back with a few options that might make sense, given what's out there, I don't know what's out there.
Right, yeah.
And then we can just make a decision at that point.
Vice Mayor, we, we will check to see what's out there and come back with a recommendation for second reading.
My only question is a sort of global generic question for those folks that are watching or will watch, you know, later on. How does this, in terms of, obviously I understand the parking, how does this benefit our community? In terms of how does it take our, where we are today to a better place in terms of a global sense? Because I know sometimes we focus very much on the details of what we're doing, but sometimes people appreciate sort of a, a global understanding, how does this benefit?
So, yeah, so I would just say we, we've talked about this in various contexts, but the biggest context I think in which we talked about it was when we were doing the zoning code rewrite and talking about Miracle Mile, et cetera. And bottom line is, you know, a lot of the complaints we get over the years are, you know, the amount of development, whether it's the height or whatever. All this does is it, it's going to bring down, and I think that the, the visual you gave there was good, was good, because you're going to bring down the size of the building by, because the parking pedestal is always what drives the height of the building, because you have to have a certain amount of parking and you're just pushing the building up. In certain places that may matter more than others, that's why we talked a lot about it in the context of Miracle Mile, obviously. But, um, that's the bottom line, is if we have parking availability, particularly, I think in the, in the CBD, and some other areas too, I think, over by Merrick Park also, there's some options. But if you have parking availability, rather than continue to require verticality on the building with additional parking, you offset it to another site that already exists and now you have smaller, less intensive buildings.
Which is great.
Right, and just to clarify, you're not, you're not using parking that's needed for that building that you're remote parking to, they have to meet their parking requirements, this is an access, or those that are listening at home.
Well, the Vice Mayor said, I think, that's the community, it benefits the community, embraces what a lot of people want, is our efforts to help, sort of like you said, contain the height of buildings as much as possible, so I think this is wonderful.
And Commissioner, because of circulation and parking, parking pedestals tend to be unattractive, tend to be rectangular, the full size of the, of the building, because you must have circulation. And, and so this, this helps with that, and as the Vice Mayor said, also helps with the verticality.
Wonderful, thank you.
I, I think it's an excellent measure to, you know, utilize the underutilized parking that we do have in the city and together with a smart parking plan, where you're going to be able to, you know, reserve a spot ahead of time, okay? I think it'll help draw more people into the Central Business District and have less frustration finding parking, so I think it's an excellent measure.
And Commissioner, we're using the new, the new technology in our new parking garage in the Menorca, same technology that Walt Disney uses in their parking garages, which is the top, which is the top technology available now, so that you can actually have it on, on your app, reserve a spot, know where you're going, and not be chasing a parking spot all the way around and conserving energy. And, and so we will, that's, that, that will, that will happen now in our new Menorca garage.
Right, excellent, thank you.
Perfect, I entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you very much, moving on to F5?
F5 is an ordinance to the City Commission providing for text amendments to the Code of the City of Corribles, Chapter 74, Article 3, Division 5, entitled Parking Replacement Assessment, providing for updates to the assessment provisions and procedures and providing for severability clause repealer provision codification providing for an effective date.
Jennifer Garcia again, City Planner. So this is encouraging rooftop dining. Several years ago, I think we only have maybe two or three in our city right now, they were reviewed as open-air dining, under the Open-Air Dining Regulations of our zoning code.
I'm sorry, we're in F5.
It's F6.
Oh, I'm sorry.
F5.
It's the, the code, the code requirement for F4, the city code requirement for F4.
Oh, okay, okay, yes, so that's very different.
The worst.
We've got a preview.
In single family, when they're applying for a permit and building a new house, they're required to have a covenant saying, I promise not to enclose.
F5, which is the Parking Replacement Assessment?
It's the one that's related to...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's why.
It's okay, sorry, I read a little fast.
Okay. So this is the city code, this is just mirroring what's being done in the zoning code, I forgot about that item. There's nothing really to talk, I mean, it's really just the same, the same intent as the zoning code.
Right, it's the code component, right.
That's why it's related, right.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, moving on to F6?
Okay, now, it's an ordinance to the City Commission providing for text amendments to the City of Corribles officials zoning code Article 3, Uses, Section 3-315 Restaurant Open-Air Dining at Ground Level and Other Locations by Removing Floor Area Ratio Requirements for Rooftop Dining, providing for severability clause repealer provision codification providing for an effective date, this is a public hearing item.
Right, so this was encouraging the rooftop dining before the zoning code update, it was regulated under our Open-Air Dining Regulations. During the zoning code update, there was, I guess, direction to apply parking requirements and FAR requirements for open-air dining on the rooftop. After looking at that through some newer projects, it, it doesn't really make sense, it's kind of hard to argue that open-air dining is going to count against a building's mass and bulk, because that's kind of intent of FAR is to control and limit the bulk of a building. So with the city manager, we kind of agree that this doesn't really make sense, it's kind of hard to apply, especially moving on with new projects, that if they come forward with another, with an extension of maybe a ground floor restaurant and having a rooftop dining, that they're limited as far as the FAR and how much they can have. So this is, this is basically going back to what was allowed before, which is what's allowing, I think, two or three rooftop dining in our, in our city.
The, the prior, the, the current building code has, has helped quite a bit on that, because the prior building code required either fire separation of 20 feet or firewalls. The, the current, the current edition of the building code has removed that, that requirement, just made it combustibility requirement, which means that we, with a four-foot wall, you can actually have that, because to, because if you have a 50-foot property and you lose 20 and 20, you're only left with, with 10 feet. Right now, you can actually use the, the 50 feet for rooftop dining. However, there are, it's not like everybody existing, it's going to be very difficult for existing buildings, because you have to have ADA accessibility and elevator, you have to have two means of egress to get out, and you also have a structural requirement as a floor, not a roof. So it's, 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 it's more really for new construction or construction that is substantially renovated.
Pretty self-explanatory? Any other motion?
I'll move it, I think it's a very logical transition, because you're moving tables from the ground level on up, so there's no need to count that as FAR.
I'll second it.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Moving on to F7?
F7 is an ordinance to the City Commission providing for text amendments to the City of Corribles official zoning code Article 2, Zoning District, Section 2-101, Single Family Residential Districts Amending Performance Standards for Ground Area Coverage by Deleting Required Covenant, Providing for Severability Clause, repealer codification, providing for an effective date, this is a public hearing item.
So currently our zoning code requires when a new single-family house is built, that you have a covenant promising they're not going to enclose that porch or open space, that's, that's currently not being counted towards your FAR. It's a, it's a big ask for a, a resident to do, just when they're, you know, applying for a permit to have that as a requirement, so staff is recommending that we do it, do away with that requirement, that if a new owner or if the same owner came forward wanting to enclose it, then staff would, would, you know, read and, and apply the zoning code and say, I'm sorry, but you can't enclose this because you're beyond your, your floor area that you're allowed for a single-family house. So it's just making it easier for, for the resident as they apply for it.
This would be similar to say you have a garage door and having a covenant, you can't block up a garage door. Well, it's understood you cannot block up, block up a garage door, if you, if you do, you have a zoning issue and a code enforcement issue. So it's kind of redundant to ask someone where it's, it's already against the zoning code to do, to, to provide a covenant, the, for, for similar to a garage door. If it's in, if it's an open area that doesn't count for square footage, then if you block it up, it's a code enforcement issue, you're going to have to remove it. So, so it's really redundant to do that at the plant, it also takes a long time as far as processing the plan to get these things done, so it's adding more time for something that really, it's, 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 you can't do.
Any other further discussion?
No.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Second. Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes, thank you.
Moving on to F8?
F8 is a resolution of the City Commission providing for the disassociation with the Business Improvement District of Corribles, Inc., providing for an intent to reserve all rights, claims and defenses and providing for an effective date. Mr. Rockman?
Mayor Commissioners, this is related to the item that you heard earlier, this is an official clarification for the benefit of the public, vendors and other interested parties, that the corporate bid, as it exists as a nonprofit, is not a political subdivision or otherwise associated with the city, and it reiterates that the city does not, and nothing in this resolution does, intend to waive any of the city's rights, claims or defenses, which are expressly reserved.
We've discussed this significantly enough, are there any other further comments?
None.
Okay, any public comment, anything we need to discuss, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
We're going to move really quickly to I1, I2.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, I1 is a resolution of the City Commission accepting the recommendation of the Chief Procurement Officer to award RFQ 202216 for plans, review and building inspection services and negotiating a professional services agreement with CAP Government, Inc., Gem Inspections and Engineering Services, Inc., MT Cosley, LLC and Universal Engineering Services, the four responsive responsible proposers pursuant to Florida Statute 287055 known as the Consultants' Competitive Negotiation Act.
known as the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act.
Good morning. Celeste Walker-Harman, Chief Procurement Officer. This was a project that was led on behalf of Development Services. It was to engage a pool of consultants for plan review services. We had four consultants respond, and we're making the recommendation to move all four forward for negotiations for contract.
Any other further comments?
I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. I, I two?
I two is a resolution of the City Commission, accepting the recommendation of the Chief Procurement Officer to award Waterway Bank Stabilization Project to NCO LLC, the lowest responsive responsible bidder in the estimated amount of four seventy-three, six twenty-five, pursuant to Section two dash seven six three of the procurement code, entitled Contract Award and Invitation to Bid twenty twenty-two nineteen.
This was a competitive solicitation issued on behalf of Public Works. It's for the Waterway Bank Stabilization, which is going to take care of approximately five hundred feet of the South Canal Bank. We had five bidders and we are awarding to the lowest responsive bidder.
How long will it take to, to do the work?
Well, right now, the estimate on the actual fabrication of the concrete bricks is about three to four months. And so after then, the work can move forward quickly. So I think we're talking to maybe about six months for the work, but maybe.
This is the work on Tarragona, next to the, the solar intrusion facility on Fifty-seventh Avenue.
Okay. Any other further comments?
None.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second. Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Perfect. Let's go back and finish up.
Go to G one? Mr. Diaz, how are you, sir?
Good morning. How are you? Hermes Diaz, Poliwis Director. Have a very brief presentation to share with the commission, Billy. There it is. So solo panels for the Granada Clubhouse slash diner. I'm sorry, didn't start from the beginning. It's probably user problem. My apologies. Can somebody bring it back?
Sorry. That's why you're not in IT.
Yes, one hundred percent. Forward is the upper button?
No, the side.
So the Granada Clubhouse diner currently includes two, two different uses. You have the clubhouse and the diner. The average yearly energy use is about a hundred and seventy thousand kilowatt hours. We estimate that the diner is about roughly seventy-five percent of that. And, and the reason we're, we're making that separation is because the energy that is going to be generated from the potential of panels is not enough to really capture the entire facility. The clubhouse is currently being renovated, so I think it makes sense if we're going to go ahead and do solo panels, just restrict it to the diner, where we haven't started construction yet, not to cause any further delays or change orders on that facility.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
When you look at your, that was your electricity bill from last year, correct?
This is four-year averages.
So do we know if they had, if they had installed LED lighting, if they had done any, and it, I mean, obviously I know the air conditioning system was, was old.
Correct.
Very energy efficient.
Unfortunately, the only information we have is historical data. So, so there's a couple of competing things that, that are happening. So as we remodel these facilities, you're going to have a lot more energy efficiency fixtures and equipment. But at the same time, I think it's reasonable to expect a heavier use out of the diner, at least a more intense use. So.
I think so. But I mean, I think you're going to have, you're going to have, again, that diner hadn't been remodeled in thirty, forty years.
Correct.
So you're talking about, you know, better insulation, lighting, you know, you have a higher seer value for your air conditioning.
One hundred percent.
Mayor, I don't, I don't think there's any, that place has not been remodeled for many years. Everything that we have there is extremely old. We're, we're, we're going to have certainly new AC units that are more efficient, energy lighting and so forth. My only concern is I saw that the energy usage was a little low.
Correct.
Compared to other facilities in the country. So I'm wondering if the usage was not quite what it, what it might be new. So that's, that's the only issue.
Are they using, using cooking with gas or electricity?
Gas. And that's a big, that's a big item there. But you have refrigeration and you have a bunch of other stuff that we expect to have a heavy usage.
But even, even compared to other facilities, other restaurants in, in, in the country, because gases, which you typically use, what, what high-end cooks like gas because they can control it so finely, we're still looking at, at energy uses that are far below what the norm is. So we're, so, so that's where we're at right now. So, so gas is something that's used in most restaurants. However, our energy uses with that consideration is still low.
Correct.
Okay. How about the windows?
Ah, it's going to seem awesome. It's all being redone right now. Actually, the, the, as part of the process job, all the windows of the entire facility is actually being impact resistant. It's all being taken care of right now.
Which would also in the summer perhaps maintain.
Correct.
You know, the temperature.
So unfortunately, all the information we have is historical. It's really difficult to gauge what the usage is going to be moving forward. Generally speaking, when you put on a facility, more often than not, you have something that is existing, you have data for several months or several years, and you use that as a, as kind of your, your, your estimates. But, you know, what we have right now is the historical data. We know it's going to change. So pretty much it's predicated on to what that usage is going to be moving forward.
I can give you some historical data. When I first moved into my house, the light, the electricity bills were four hundred dollars. Okay. Then I got it down to a hundred, hundred and fifty with insulation, et cetera, and impact windows and so forth. And of course, now I have solar panels, so I'm now down to the, the lowest possible that you can pay. What is it now, twenty-nine bucks? I can all charge this now, Vince? Mayor?
How much did you say?
Twenty-nine, thirty dollars is the bare minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what percentage of the current electric usage would be covered by solar?
So I'm, I'm going to go through that. The calendar electricity bill, the, the electricity bill for calendar year twenty twenty-one was fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. So that is one option. We call that the southeast option. That is a southeast roof or facility. We worked that allocation with the help of the City Architects Office. Generally speaking, when you're trying to put solo panels, you're trying to put them in a way where it'll be less visible from the street. Unfortunately, because this facility happens to be at a corner, and because of the golf courses, the visibility, it's, it's, it will be seen. Greenway is the secondary road. So that was, that was the suggestion. It's approximately eleven hundred square foot of allowable roof space. That allows for a system of approximately thirty-three, twenty-three kilowatt hours, sixty panels, three hundred and eighty watts, with an annual estimated production of thirty-four thousand kilowatt hours. The panels that we're looking at are American-made with a twenty-five year warranty. Keep in mind, this is not a design. This is just a high-level or magnitude review. If this were to proceed, you have to go through the design process and, you know, a review by the Board of Architects and the Historical Precision Board may be necessary. And this is an example of what somebody walking on Greenway will be looking at. So for that option, this is a graph that shows the solar production versus the historical energy consumption. We estimate that approximately twenty-five percent of the diner's historical consumption, not of the entire facility, just of the diner, will be offset by the solo panels. We require an end meeting and agreement with FPL, and we require the installation of a utility interactive inverter, and that's an FPL requirement for solo installation when you have an end metering. We're looking at approximately eighty-seven thousand dollars, including design and contingency. And the project's estimated to offset sixteen tons, sixteen tons of CO2 for the life of the system and the equivalent of five hundred and sixty-one new trees being planted.
Can we get any, any, any kind of a?
Tax credit?
Tax credit under the new credits that are out there for solar panels and?
That is a possibility, but we're not a hundred percent sure whether we will qualify for it or not. So, but it's, it's up to thirty percent. But, but we, we don't know whether we should, we could be able to get that or not at this point.
We will actively pursue it if we can.
Absolutely. So another option, and this is something that, there were some concerns about visibility and there was a question as to whether it was a separate, a different roof that it would be less visible from the street. And even though Granada is the main thoroughfare here, this is another option where solo panels could be installed. It's a lot smaller. It's only approximately four hundred square foot. That will cost about thirty-five thousand dollars only. But that will only upset about ten percent of the diner's historical energy consumption. And that's roughly what it will look like from the other side. And obviously, another option would be to do both. And then you're looking at roughly thirty-five percent of consumption for the entire facility at, at the higher expense. So that's, that's definitely an alternative as well. Return on investment, you're looking at roughly seventeen, twenty years. There is the possibility of a donation or a grant for twenty thousand dollars, which will reduce that return on investment down to fourteen years if we do the southeast option, which is the larger panel installation, approximately nine years, eight to nine years for the southwest option, and fifteen years return if you do both. The panels have a, supposed to have a warranty of twenty-five years, so they're all within, I will say, they're all within the lifespan of the system. That's it. So if you have any questions, we'll be more than happy to answer them.
Sir, any issue with how this comports with our, like, code requirements? I know we've had issues in the past where residents have sought to install solar and we have this requirement that it can't be visible from.
So the Board of Architects?
This is in the middle of a golf course, so it's tricky, but.
So the Board of Architects has tried to take that position in the past. There is a state law that prohibits us from placing those kinds of parameters. So we can go to the Board of Architects, as I've said to the manager, for a voluntary review. But if you remember, a few years ago, the city exempted itself from the zoning code.
Right.
So if the manager wished to simply bring it to the commission and avoid the Board of Architects entirely, he can. If he wants to get his feedback, he can. But that idea that they can tell us it can't be in the front-facing or that's not permissible under state law anyway.
Right.
Is there any likelihood that somebody will come up with a barrel tile in the timeframe that we're looking at that would be solar, that would be a solar panel? We were talking about Tesla, but it's not ready yet.
The Tesla tiles, they're not quite approved down here yet. My understanding is they're very strong. It's, that would, that would put the entire roof at play as far as a solar panel, and it would be a much, much better aesthetic option. Still not available right now. My understanding is they don't have the county approval yet. So I, but, but that would be certainly would be, would be an option in the, in the future. This is a difficult, a difficult building because it's in a golf course. So you have exposures in, in all directions. So no matter where you, where you put it, we tried to avoid the west, the completely west direction, which is towards Granada, and the north direction, which is toward Corribles Country Club. But no matter where you put it, you will have visibility because you're in, you're, you're in a golf course.
Which is why it would be ideal if there was a, a barrel tile solution that would take care of the visibility. The aesthetics part of it. I don't know about the cost, but.
I mean, I, I don't know. I, I get, I agree with what you're saying, although I do view the sort of Granada fundage as the front.
Correct.
facade of the building, which if you're doing apples for apples, when we're looking at homes, that's really what you're trying to keep it in the bag. The fact that the back of this building happens to be on a golf course, I get it, but, you know.
Correct.
Vice Mayor, if you, if you look at a corner facility.
Right.
Where you have two corners visible.
Right.
That's what we've done. We've kept, instead of taking these two corners, we took the other two corners, similar to if you had a corner condition.
Right.
In a, in a regular residence. So that's the idea of that. The fact that you're invisible in all directions makes it, makes it, makes it quite difficult. But if this was a corner house and, and you had two corners visible, then you'd have the two other corners would be towards the back of the house and towards the side setback. So we've used the side setback and back.
And, and I will mention that the roof of the facility was actually redone. I think it was finished around mid twenty nineteen. So the roof there is fairly new.
Right. I mean, it's sort of like my roof. I did do the solar panels. I do have a corner house. And if you look from one street, yeah, you can see them. Now, I've sat with the city architect on many projects that have come through, residents putting solar panels on, and we would come up with a contiguous design that was aesthetically appropriate. The other advantage we have, because we have a golf course, we could put a few more beautiful trees out there, you know, at a sightline distance away that's not going to shade the solar panels, but can resolve that aesthetic appeal issue that some folks are concerned with. I think it's, I mean, Ms. Jude provided us the opportunity of a donation of twenty thousand dollars. And as part of her legacy, I think we should, you know, take advantage of it. This facility is only open up for breakfast and lunch, so that, you know, helps keep that usage down. And I think you'll see, just like the electricity bill on my house, it used to be four hundred dollars, I think you're going to see a dramatic drop with all the new pieces that we're putting into play there.
The roof has, has recently been replaced. It's going to have about a twenty-five year life. The panels have about a twenty-five year life. They will, they both pretty much coincide with a replacement period of twenty to twenty-five years. And then hopefully, Commissioner Kason, we will, we will have the, the tiles, the, the Tesla tiles. We, I, I would like to go to, to the Tesla tiles as much as possible, but it's currently unfortunately not, not available.
I tried back in twenty, what was it, eighteen, when I replaced my roof? But still, 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 they're not available.
So I have a quick question. I guess a comment first. Having watched some people play golf on that golf course, thank goodness it's behind the golfers and not in front, we'd have to replace a couple of those panels. That's a side comment. My other comment, and I brought it up last time, and again, I'm not an expert in, in solar panels as many of my colleagues are and obviously you and your team are. You mentioned the kitchen would be gas powered.
Correct.
So that would leave lights, air conditioning.
Refrigeration.
Refrigeration.
Probably the biggest.
So how does it work? Because I know when people have the, you know, lose power hurricane, whatever it is, does solar power maintain the power available for an extended time after that? I mean, if I'm, I'm connected to FPNL, I lose power, I lose power.
So the, the thing is that because that facility only generates roughly, assuming when you do both sides, which is the, you know, it's about thirty-five percent of the total, right? And there are no batteries part of this because it doesn't really, since you're not generating more than you're producing, there's no point in going through the expense for the batteries. Also, the electrical room is rather small. So for us to even get to that level, there may be some additional expense. So the only way to accomplish that would be then to separate the circuits and then with some kind of a transfer switch. So, so no, I mean, if, if this is used as a, a straight-up connection, if, if you lose power, most likely most of the facility will lose power.
We will try to, to optimize that.
Yeah.
One of the biggest issues is refrigeration during power. So we're going to try to optimize the circuits that receive this.
Right.
And certainly refrigeration, then lighting, but we, but the, the facility cannot operate just, just on that. But we will certainly try to, to optimize the, the use. We've looked at battery power. It's very expensive and it's very difficult to get right now. So it's probably not, not the time to do it, but that's something that we can look at as battery technology gets better and better. We, we, that's certainly something that we'll be looking at.
Why, and I defer to the mayor and Commissioner Anderson and, and Kason as well, because I, I think they're a lot more knowledgeable on solar in particular. But why is it that it's only, depending on which option you show me, twenty-five to thirty-five percent as opposed to? I just leaned over to the mayor and I said, like, what percentage of your house is?
Right.
Covered by solar? He said a hundred percent. So why, why is that, I guess?
So let me, let me, let me, let's talk about this. So when I got solar six years ago, technology has advanced leaps and bounds. So now, I don't know the exact numbers, but a house like mine that had forty panels on it, now the footprint has gotten smaller. You can have more panels on your, on your property. I also have batteries on my house. So to me, right now, some months I'm at nine dollars and thirty cents, which is the, your standard FPNL hookup fee. Sometimes I'm at thirty, forty, fifty, depending on if it's a summer month, I may get to a hundred dollars. But on average, I'm almost like at zero. You know, in around the nine dollar range, if you average out the entire year. I, I replaced my air conditioners ten years ago when I built my house. They have more efficient air. They have more efficient air conditioning now, higher SEER values, better LED lighting, better insulation, more Energy Star rated, uh, appliances. So it's, the efficiencies have only gone up. The solar panel technology has only increased. So I'm not saying these numbers are wrong, but I'm, I'm having a tough time understanding why it's only 25% or 35%.
So, uh, Mayor, and, and I, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm only a little bit concerned. And we're going to have to look at the electrical side of this. And we've discussed this with, uh, with our IT directors and electrical engineer. And we seem to be using a lot less energy in this restaurant than normal. So I'd like to find out what's going on.
But is that because of the offset on the gas?
Uh, no, because, because restaurants all use gas. I mean, cooks like to use gas. They don't like to use electric heating.
Right.
Be, because of the control.
But when you, but for example, sorry, when you say, for, for example, 35%, just to use that as a number, are you including in the 65% the gas function? Or not even?
No, no, no.
You're excluding the gas and then just the electrical, it's 35%?
What we took, what we took is that we looked at the, the prior, the prior four-year usage. We took an average from that versus what it's generating. Remember, I, I mean, I'm not sure what homes' electrical bills, but even though this usage on this facility, the, the electric bill is relatively low, it's still $14,000 for the entire year. That means that it's over a thousand dollars a month that we're paying on average. I mean, I don't know how much a regular house bill will be, but I presume for, for some houses, even though some of the bigger homes would still be significantly lower than that.
Could it have been, could it have been that it's with COVID, a lot of the clothes not being used, not many people going there?
I'm not sure how much, how much of the facility was actually utilized and how much work was done inside this facility. Uh, we've had our IT director, again, who's an electrical engineer, look at that, your, your national standard and we, we're way below that. So what we're going to try to do with, with the solar panels is optimize the use of the solar panels. And I think we, uh, Mayor, as you, as you mentioned.
But again, I'm just not getting why we're so far from 100%
So let me, so let me.
with a relatively small facility.
So let me explain to you of what, of what, let me go off what the vice mayor's saying. So if you look at my house, it's almost 3,000 square feet. It's got two air conditionings, split, split units, you know, one for living, one for bedrooms. It's got probably, I don't know, 80 hi-hats throughout the entire house. Four bedrooms and an office, pool pump, sprinklers. It's consuming, it's consuming electricity. So let's say on average it's a hundred dollars a month. Well, my expense was, it used to be five, $600 a month. And now I'm on my second electric car and I charge at home. So I don't even charge. I charge, I couldn't, I charge my cars at home. So I'm consuming off, off
Grid.
my own grid, basically, which again is in that metering, we're feeding into FPNL and basically we're doing reverse metering. That's a whole other discussion for another day. So I, I just think that to me, look, we're here to talk about whether aesthetically, I'm in favor of the solar. Whether aesthetically we should include Granada or not. At this moment, I'm not sure I want to include Granada. I don't want to, I don't want to set that precedent here. And then, you know, be in a situation where potentially a compromise staff's ability to tell somebody, hey, listen, no, you can't put solar panels in, in this location or we don't recommend it. Better said before the city attorney, you know, corrects me that we can't do that anyways. So I'm, I'm in favor of having it on the back. You know, trying to fit as many solar panels as we possibly can. And also I don't understand the cost. The cost to me seems high. We, let me tell you why. Because my system was $30,000. Okay? And that was with, then you, then you include a 30%, you include a 30% of, of tax, actual tax rebate on your taxes. That was six years ago. I know that the cost of solar has gone down significantly. Mine are American made also. I wanted to make sure of that.
Yes.
American made. So I put my money where my mouth is. I paid more for mine to make sure that I followed, you know, the legislation that I was pushing forward, which I could have gotten cheaper Chinese-made panels, which Chinese, China is exporting all over the world. So I think that we need to take a look at that. I can give you several names, not on the record here, of companies that, that, that provide solar here and to see what the numbers are. And if you want, I can help you with that.
We'll be more than happy to. I, I will say the numbers that we have there right now, we actually reached out to several companies. Um, and the prices that we got was, in fact, the actual price was $75,000. And then there needs to be a design, 5% contingency, uh, 5% design and 10% contingency. That's how we come up with that number.
I think, Mayor, that this presentation is really for the location of where this panel is.
I don't have it. That, that we, you and I can discuss.
So we can take a deeper dive, a deeper engineering dive into this, which, but we want to make sure that, that it's okay with the commission because if we, if it's not, if, if we can't do it, then it would be a moot point. So if, if we remove the, and the, the, the most efficiency is in the east side.
Correct.
There, there was no question, which would be, which would be the back of the building.
Which is perfectly fine. And by the way, another thing we could do there too, is we can have conversations with multiple solar, solar companies and manufacturers, say, listen, this is going to be a showcase project. So if you want to be able to bring clients to see something, this is going to be an opportunity for you. You can bring clients 24 hours a day. You don't have to bother a resident. Like the, the individuals that sold me my solar, they'll call me and say, hey Vince, can I drive somebody onto your property? Cause you can't see it from the street. And by the way.
This will be visible.
And by the way, just so we're clear, before the manager was the manager, the manager, uh, required me to put 190 penetrations through my roof. Okay? 190. Now you're required to put half. Okay? So there was no shortcuts for anybody here. Okay?
They won't fly away for sure.
They won't fly away. Thank God.
We will be, we will be doing a similar installation there.
So what I'm telling you is that there's been a lot of advances. There's been a lot of advances. Okay?
Do the panels have to be on the roof? Is there any, how far away can the panels be and transmit electricity to a facility?
They gotta be on the roof. We don't have, we don't have a field or anything like that.
It would be, it would be, it would be a field of panels, which probably would be a better, a worse look than this. The, I think the, these are not, this has a kind of a Dutch roof and these are on the bottom. So that roof has two pitches. This will be on the, on the bottom. And if we, uh, do some things as, as Commissioner Anderson said, put some trees. And as the mayor said, put some trees.
I don't think the trees might be the.
Yeah.
To be far enough away, they don't, they, they don't hurt the facility, but we, but we can block.
I also don't get the sense that people are as offended by the aesthetic of the solar panels as we sometimes think. I think.
As there's a particular house on that street though.
Yeah, I mean, well, that's okay.
But it's like having a skylight on your roof. If you put it in a contiguous pattern, you know, artistically.
Do it correctly. Right.
You know, and we plant the proper trees.
Yeah.
Um, there that can provide the visual effect that would keep people happy. I, I think it's a wonderful win-win situation.
But I do, but again, I'd, I'd, look, I'd like to under, obviously I'm in support of this. So this is just an update, but um, what, what's your, cause I'm getting all these numbers, 35% here's the.
Vice Mayor.
What's, what's the projected break even point?
For.
And you don't have to tell me right now.
Get a deeper dive in this because we, we can come back and present.
And, and why, and why is that number so low? Cause that's the part that to me is surprising because, and I don't think it's as simple as putting panels all, I'm not suggesting we put panels on Granada. To be clear, I agree, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
But it's all relative and proportional. If on a house, by putting panels along the entire backside, you're able to power the full house, I'm not understanding why this building is not getting more, maybe not 100%, but 35% seems really low.
We would like to take a deeper dive in, in the electrical design and, and we're, and we're at the point right now where the design of the, of the, of the restaurant is, is, is at that level. We can also look at the, the design of, of the pro shop is done.
And it's particularly low if you're telling me you have gas on the most high intensity use appliances that you're using.
I'm going to take it a step further. I'm going to take it a step further. This facility is used for breakfast and lunch. When you have a residence, you're using it all night. Lights are on, air conditioning is on. So that's number, number, that's, that's a main, I'm, I'm very important. And also don't forget, please, we all know this and I'll talk to the manager about this. Rates are going up in 2024.
Right.
And in 2025 is my.
So.
So as per the Public Service Commission, it's been approved already. So we can either, we can either pay for it now in infrastructure through solar and have a payoff. By the way, I paid my system off for it. My system is paid off because when you incorporate an electric car and you, and you add not only electrical savings, but also the savings in gas, it really, it really knocks off the pay, the payback period, the ROI by half.
So on the years, we are, I would actually assume a 3% increase of electricity price every year to come up with the approximate, uh, a return on investment.
Okay.
Oh, that was the, I mean, if it's, if it's higher, then obviously the return on investment will be quicker.
Mr. Director, do you want a vote here in regards to that we're in favor of the location?
Sure. If you give us a direction, we're more than happy. We'll, we'll like some direction, uh, to dive into the specifics.
That would be good because that, that it's going to determine the scope of the work. At that point, we can look at the, we can work with our asset manager on the operation of the restaurant. We can look at, we can look at the, at the, um, facilities, uh, the air conditioning, et cetera, refrigeration that, that we're going to have. And then we can, we, we, we can certainly take a, a much deeper dive and get some good numbers, uh, based on what we're going to be doing.
I'll be happy to move it. And I'm just going to ask you to look at one other thing. When I put in my panels, because I didn't do the batteries, I wasn't willing to pay 20K for the batteries at the time, because my little generator handles my refrigerator. There's an in-phase switch that was supposed to have been manufactured that would have not turned the panels off when FPNL cuts power. So you would at least have power during the daytime handling your refrigeration, your air conditioning, depending on how heavily you air condition it. Look for that and see if it's available.
Sure.
That would be sweet if we could keep it powered during the day because it's only a daytime facility.
Right. Can we clarify for the, those watching, uh, what we're voting on? It's just do the study for this location. Not that we're approving, that comes back later, but it's just, you know, come up with the numbers. Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
This is in favor, this is just to, uh, give guidance to move forward and approving the location in the rear of the project, not accepting Granada.
Yeah. What about the side though?
Not accepting Granada.
No, but what about the side? There's a side also, right?
Yeah, we, that's not.
No, no, just, just on Greenway, on the southeast, larger side.
So that would be just in the back, if, if this were a home, it would be in the back of the home.
Got you. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before you vote, we do have a member of the public request to speak, Ms. Maria Cruz.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Cruz.
Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road. You know, I'm not an expert on this, but I'm sitting back here and I'm questioning. We're bringing something to you and maybe we can get $20,000 in a grant. Maybe we can get a tax credit. Maybe, maybe, maybe. When it comes to you, we should have answers. It should not be maybe.
Can I, can I answer you? May I?
Yes, please.
The reason what, the reason what, what the director's doing along with the manager is that to get the right calculation, we have to have the approval of how much, how many panels we can install in the location. So they were being very careful and thoughtful to curate the panel location as per the commission's request. So we're not going to just put panels around the entire facility and it's not going to look, in my opinion, the best aesthetically. So what this gentleman is doing is bringing us right now a update on the installation. And now that he has guidance with the vote we're about to take, he can properly calculate, properly calculate how much of an ROI in regards to our investment, which is the solar panels. Also, we have to go after the grant. The grant is not a for sure. We have to apply. And all the application process takes again, how many panels are we going to install? What, what is our request? All that kind of information. We're doing our legwork right now so we can put together a grant application, which is thorough and gives us the best opportunity to win.
Okay. I understand that. But I've, I've sat here long enough to know that you get almost 100%. So that should have been entered into the equation before we got here, is what I'm saying. Some of the stuff that you all brought up is common knowledge already. I mean, we hear this all the time, right? So when somebody comes in with 35, wait a second, shall we check and see why? He can get 100 and I'm only going to get him 35. Is what I'm saying. That's comment number one. Comment number two, I'm, I'm, I guess because of my age, I'm getting tired of every time or several times when we discuss, see, I've learned not to generalize. Um, several times when we discuss municipal buildings, mobility hub, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We always have, well, you know, there is something in the county code that we don't have to do this. There is something, uh, the state says we don't have to. Well, you know what? It's time for us to do what I don't expect the residents to do, as you say, but not as you do. I think instead of saying, we don't have to, let's see if we can do it. Let's try to do as much as we expect the residents to do. And today I hear you saying, uh, Commissioner Anderson, maybe having trees will make it look better. Do the residents get that choice?
Yes. So to answer your question, the decision we made here today was to only put them in the back of the property, which is exactly what we ask residents to do when we can. Um, so we expressly said, let's not put it on what we consider the front Granada. The trees that she's talking about are above and beyond, which is to try to shield the view from the backside of the property because it so happens to be a golf course, which most residents don't have an entire golf course in their backyard.
What I'm saying to you is perhaps when we come up with something creative like that, that will be something that we could, just because the back may not be in the front, but there's somebody living in the back.
Yeah.
Okay. So that may be.
Sure.
What I'm saying is.
What happens is when, when residents put it in the back, oftentimes when you have too many trees, there's not enough sun getting through for it to be a palpable option for a single family home.
All I'm saying is let's try to do as much as we ask the residents to do. Encourage the residents to be as creative as you are, instead of sticking to the rules and saying, no, you cannot do this. No, there are options. There are things that you can do.
That's exactly what was done on my house and it complies with the current code.
Yeah.
That is the backside of my house. It does face east and it does carry for throughout the year, all of my usage. Okay. So that's no different. And I'm, my front of my house is loaded with trees. So if my, my home can be carried with 20 panels, you know, I would think that this building that is smaller than my house should do pretty well too. I mean, remember I had a $400 bill when I first came into that house. It leaked like a sieve.
Commissioner, but we also, we also, you know, you install windows like Commissioner Menendez, I think said. The impact windows stop the air conditioning from running. The machine stops running. Spend a little, spend a little bit more, spend an extra 5,000 like the manager will spend on the air conditioning to get a higher SEER rating. It costs more money. But we also have to have one thing, which is critically important. And that is something that I sometimes I raise my voice at home to my two young daughters. I say, discipline to turn the lights off. If you're not in a room, turn the lights off. You know, if you're going to leave the house, leave, leave one light on. You don't need to leave 50 lights on. You know, there has to be discipline.
I bring you to my house.
Yeah. Like those two adorable girls, I'm pretty sure that you could, that you could, uh, you could crack the whip there and turn the lights off. But my point is it requires discipline to turn the lights off so that when you're not there, you're trying to save money. Yes.
Oh yeah. No, I had the teenager phase. They hated it when I would turn off the water heater.
So my elder becomes a teenager today.
All right. Happy birthday.
Oh, and by the way, since, since the commissioner mentioned, get out, get out, get rid of your water heater and get a tankless water heater. These are all things that lower the cost significantly of electricity bill and it pays dividends. Okay?
Right.
Um, we have a motion. A second?
Second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mena?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it, Director. Moving on to G2.
Yes, Mayor. G2 is a resolution to the city commission directing the city attorney and city manager to re-initiate the annexation process for High Pines, Ponce Davis. Ms. Levy Garcia will present the item.
Ms. Garcia, good to see you again.
Likewise, Mayor. So this resolution simply directs the city manager and the city attorney to re-initiate the annexation process for High Pines and Ponce Davis. If you would like to adopt a similar resolution to the one you adopted for Little Gables, it would direct, uh, city staff to engage in certain due diligence and to bring back our findings to the city commission for further direction.
Listen, it's pretty self-explanatory. I put this on the agenda. I think it's, we've all been getting a lot of phone calls from residents who are, uh, feeling that they're being left behind, people who want to be engaged in, uh, Ponce Davis and High Pines. And at the end of the day, we live in the greatest country in the world. We shouldn't be afraid of a vote. That's what I believe in.
So, so I think what you just said there at the end is important. The idea here is basically what we already did for Little Gables, which is to just do the initial due diligence and report back.
That's a question that I'm posing, right? So this resolution is just re-initiate the process, kind of with no, no additional detail.
Sure.
The resolution that was adopted for Little Gables was, was a little more, um, step by step. It directed staff to engage in certain due diligence, hire consultants, appropriated a budget.
Have we done that?
Perform, we are in, all the consultants are on board. They're performing their due diligence now. And as soon as we have something to share with you to garner additional, um, direction, we will do so.
You're, you're, you're the sponsors. Is that what you have in mind to basically track the?
I just want to, you know, have this, this resident dovetail what we, what we already set forth and what we. set forth and where we approved and to move forward in the same direction.
Did we designate somebody on the dais?
The mayor.
The mayor. So does that, can we do that again?
Right. So I can amend this resolution. So it basically does the same exact thing as the Little Gables resolution, which is take these steps, the mayor has to designate an individual, come back to the city commission with your findings and at that point get additional direction.
I would be in favor of that.
And then the other question would also be timing wise, is the idea for these things to kind of travel in tandem?
I like uniformity.
Okay. Yeah. I think it should travel in tandem. People have, deserve to vote.
If you're okay with that, which may, then.
Again.
The only thing I want to add and just a comment and, and I think both avenues are important and we should pursue, see where we end up. But at the end of the day, once we know where we're headed, you know, I think we need to make sure that when the time comes that we have enough resources with regards to safety, fire, police, so that if we do bring any of those areas on board, we can provide the same quality service we provide now. And at the same time, to make sure those areas that get our best continue to get our best. I'm not going to specific, just in general, I think it's a balancing act, but I'm, like my colleagues, I'm ready to support this and move forward.
I have no doubt we can do that. I mean, we, we went through the whole process last time on our side of things, you know, and we talked a lot about that. I'm sure things have changed, so you'll update us on that. But, you know, my, my thing continues to be setting aside what the mayor thinks, my colleagues and any of us think about annexation or not. You know, what I don't want is what I felt happened last time on the county side of things, which is they, they weren't, they weren't really on board. And so I think the goal here, when we talked about this last time, and again with this, since we're going to mirror it, is, and when we talked about the mayor being the perfect person to do it because he has really good relationships with people at the county and, 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 you know, we have a lot of new commissioners now at the county. And so with the help of really good consultants that are experts in this area is get the information and come back and tell us like, hey, look, we feel good about the possibility that they're going to be supportive this time or not, so that we can make a decision, you know?
Yeah, listen, well, we have to be honest to ourselves. And I agree with you wholeheartedly, but there's a lot of special interests here that has their own agenda. And we have to be very candid about that. And, you know, there's going to be a lot of stones that are going to be thrown because people have their own interests. But the interesting thing about it, I know that everybody in the commission has, how many times you run into somebody and say, hey, congratulations on getting a great piece of property on Sunset and now building a world-class facility like the manager has spearheaded with his team that we're about to embark on? I'd like to go to that fire station, which is within 30 feet from my front door of my house. I'm sorry, you can't. What do you mean, I can't? No, you got to depend on the county. But we'd love to get you involved. Next time, come out and engage. I have probably about 30 names of very prominent people that live in High Pines and Ponce Davis, who will tell me and say, listen, I'm going to be engaged this time. And I'm going to make sure that I do everything in my power to bring those people to the table, just like I did everything in my power to make sure that we elected the right people in the county. And to make sure that the representation that we have here before us is, is people who care about the residents and care about the interest, not about their own special interests. And that's what's key. And we want to make sure that that's what prevails here. Because at the end of the day, we work on behalf of the city of Coral Gables. We don't work on behalf of our own interests.
I think, you know, I think on that point, like, because I, I agree, the, I think we're thinking sort of, if there was a failure last time, right? It's that the people that got involved, in terms of residents I'm talking about now who were supportive, they were supportive at the city level, advocating to us, but really not at the county level at all. And ultimately, the county is the one that made the decision, right? So I think what's important is as we engage, if, if this proceeds, depending on what gets reported back and whatever happens, that people get the message like, hey, you need to advocate over there as well and let your representatives know what you think over there because we did this once, we were supportive and it still didn't happen.
But I think also, I think also we're, we're putting together a team, a team of, you know, the best and the brightest.
Yep.
Where people who have been in this position before, who will work with our great team here at the city and understand the pitfalls and understand how to address issues at the county. So, and the commission is very different, by the way. The commission is a very different commission. And I think that this is incredibly beneficial. And I think that we're, we're doing things in the right way, not that we didn't do them before, but we also have to be honest with the process, you know, honest with the process, which is marred sometimes in special interests. And we have to consider every situation and every angle before we step into a room. And I hate to say this, we can't really trust the process. We have to really, really, really be, really do our due diligence, really do our due diligence and be on our toes to understand that, you know, we have to go through the process and make sure we dot every i and cross every t and never take anything for granted, never.
I just want to add that, you know, historically, the cities, even when George Merrick was around, was a city that was growing. The mayor, as some of you may recall, came across the map 1924, which you donated to the museum. And the interesting thing in that map 1924, and then you move one year later, 1925, there are sections of Coral Gables that weren't on that map. That was George Merrick's map. The craft section didn't exist in 1924. It popped up in the map 1925. So there was a constant growth, smart growth, but it's always been part of our DNA. So I, you know, I think moving forward, we consistently move forward in a smart way and I think it benefits, at the end of the day, all our residents.
And the, and the people that we've, and the communities that we've annexed over the years have been communities that have wanted to be part of the Gables because of what Gables represents. And I think this one, it's going to be very important that the residents understand what's in it for them, both our residents and the residents there. I mean, hopefully they have somebody there that we can negotiate with. I mean, I don't know if we have anybody that represents them.
I have, I've, I've been working already on both sides, both with High Pines and Ponce Davis and also with Little Gables. But you know, the interesting thing is that they also, they also say the same thing. This, we, we took things for granted. We took things for granted. Now they're a lot more organized and they understand the benefits and they understand what's, what's before them.
We, we just, you know, Commissioner Kason, you weren't in office at the time that that happened, so I'm not sure how.
But we started this 11 years ago, I remember, with annexation with Pat Solerano.
Of course, of course.
Went to the county and.
But, but what I was going to say to you is, to the extent you don't already know this, but just, we, when we did it last, we put out a survey slash petition, I don't know what the, what we called it, but, and the residents in these neighborhoods voted and it was.
It was over 20%.
It was over what?
It was over, so you needed 20% in order to initiate the process of the county. Both areas voted over 20%.
Okay.
So we were in good, we were in good shape.
Hopefully, hopefully this time it'll work.
Yep.
Can I get a motion?
So I have a suggestion just for your consideration. If the idea is to have this resolution mirror your previous resolution, you can just amend the previous one to add High Pines and Ponce Davis. And that was Resolution 2022-196.
Okay. I'll move to amend it to include High Pines, Ponce Davis.
I'll second it.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
None?
All right.
You sure?
Yes, sir.
No public comment?
I'm going to wait for some?
All right.
We don't, we don't, Mr. Clerk, we don't have any public comment? None?
We do not have public comments, sir.
Okay, I just couldn't hear you. I'm sorry. I want to make sure we have public comment.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. Thank you for your hard work. Moving on to I3.
I3 is a resolution of the City Commission accepting the recommendation to waive the competitive process of the procurement code to negotiate an award or contract for the completion of renovation work at the Granada Diner as a special procurement bid waiver pursuant to 2-691 of the procurement code.
I just want to add, Mayor, that we will negotiate heavily and if I don't feel that this is a proper bid, we will go out to bid, just to let everybody know.
And I just want to add that, you know, the mayor and Commissioner Anderson, we were at a town hall meeting regarding the structure, the work that's going to be done. And there was great public input at that time. And we were there, the administration was there and we did our best to answer any questions the community had. And one question had to do with a timeline. And the community really wants this to happen sooner rather than later, understandably. And I just want the community to know and that we as a, as a commission, administration, we heard you. And that's why we're taking the step today to do a bid waiver, to expedite the process, to shorten that timeline so that we can deliver what the community wants. And I'm honored to co-sponsor this item with the mayor and I know the colleagues too. We hear what you say and we do our best to respond. And this is just one of many ways that we respond to your, your needs and your requests.
So is there any public comment or anybody else?
No.
I'm in favor, so.
All right. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to I4.
I4 is a resolution of the City Commission approving a one-year extension of the murals on the Mile program.
Mayor, this is for the, for the extension of the current murals. I believe that economic development would like to, to, they've been very successful and economic development would like to extend the, the current program by one year.
Yes, exactly what the city manager said. It is, has been very successful. We've had a lot of traffic on our murals and all of the property owners that, there you go, all the property owners that own the, the walls have already agreed and we're very happy that we would extend it, so.
I think it's great. I think this was a successful project. Setting aside what anybody thinks about any individual mural, whatever, that's a subjective thing, but I do think it's nice to have these spaces activated, you know? And I think when you walk by this plaza now and you see that, it's a lot more inviting. I see kids running around and they're playing and my kids are going in there taking pictures with the stuff. Like, it's fun and people are engaged with it as opposed to just a blank wall, you know? And so I think anytime we have an opportunity to do that, again, within the context of what we want to see in our city, you know, I don't think we're necessarily looking to be, you know, Winwood, but I think we can do things that are tasteful here and, and I think they're, they're a lot of fun.
Yeah. And it was also in the middle of, it's on, it's on Miracle Mile, so there was a theme behind it, their murals on, on the mile. And it brought people to the downtown in a specific area and that we were struggling with, so.
Do you plan to keep the same murals or open it up?
No, we would keep the same ones. Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're all in good shape and I, I do think it'd help bring the traffic down to the mile and activate an area, you know, a blank wall is a pretty boring thing to go look at.
We, you know, and you, when you, you know, you put this a year out, we've talked a little bit with, with Martha about, you know, the Centennial and all the different things we're going to be doing with that. I, I could see an opportunity to do something cool in correlation with everything you're going to have going on with the Centennial and maybe have something related to that as you sort of get 12 months from now and you're further along planning for that. So keep that in mind as a possibility.
Yep. Good point.
All right.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kason?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Moving on to J1.
Yes, Mayor. J1 is a resolution of the City Commission directing the city attorney to update the sea level rise white paper adopted in Resolution 2016-223. Ms. Horace?
Mayor, as you and then Mayor Kason will recall, in 2016, the commission adopted a white paper on sea level rise that was titled "Legal Considerations Surrounding Adaptation to the Threat of Sea Level Rise." And this was published and made available to the public and it was very well received. It was shared as a resource by numerous nonprofit organizations and governmental entities, including, as examples Georgetown University's Climate Center Adaptation Clearinghouse, the Southeast Florida Climate Compact, the Climate Action Tracker Consortium, Florida Sea Grant, the City of St. Augustine, the City of Delray Beach and New York State, and has been discussed in publications such as the Florida Bar Journal, the Florida Bar's ELULS Reporter, the NYU Review of Law and Social Change and the Fordham Environmental Law Review. So this, this paper was drafted by Special Counsel to the City Attorney's Office with the assistance of staff. And six, since 2016, there have been environmental and legal changes, of course. And so Commissioner Kason has requested and sponsored this item to direct our office to update the white paper and of course bring it back for your review and approval.
Matt, do you want to?
Mr. Mayor?
Matt Anderson, you'd like to say anything about it? I think this is, this was a pioneering study, really. I think we were the only city to have done this in the country at the time. And I remember that I had calls from all over, from Alaska, from everywhere saying, wow, I mean, can we have it? We said, yes, sure, it's available, it's on our website. And people were asking for it and were very appreciative of it because we all know that because of physics, we're going to have sea level rise. The four-county compact has predicted various numbers depending what, pick your number, but it's going to be several feet or more. And cities have to prepare for, how are we going to, how are we going to adapt to that? There's going to be legal implications. When do we stop providing services? When do people stop paying taxes? Who deals with buildings that are sitting in water? I mean, there's all kinds of things that we need to begin thinking about now to prepare, as we prepare public works, plans for redoing buildings and pump stations and so on. So laws change and I think this is an opportunity to catch up with what's happened in the last five years.
And to your point, Commissioner, we have been sharing this around the entire country. Anytime I meet with a city that reaches out to us, and it's not just on this legal paper, we were one of the first cities to complete lidar mapping of our city, doing a vulnerability assessment, looking at all of our critical infrastructure. So this aligned perfectly in the city attorney's office, you know, as usual, did an amazing job and we were able to collaborate on this and work on it together. And, you know, I think it's really continued to put our city in a, not only in a leadership position on this, but really preparing our residents and our businesses for what, you know, the future may, may hold and us preparing and making sure we're as resilient as possible, not only for sea level rise, but also planning for that next storm that we know eventually will be coming with hurricanes and so on and so forth. So from our perspective, this has been a super valuable document. I also help oversee the Sustainability Directors Network for the entire state of Florida, been in that role. And I've shared that throughout that entire network. So it's not only our other cities and municipalities using it within the state, but across the country as well. So, and that, it ties perfectly into also the Sea Level Rise Mitigation Fund that we So, and, and that it ties perfectly into also the Sea Level Rise Mitigation Fund that we established a few years ago. Again, first in the country to be able to do that. Um, so it aligns perfectly with that and helps us inform our decisions, uh, related to that as well. So just wanted to highlight that.
I'm very glad you've, you've brought this forward because so many things have changed, um, since two thousand sixteen. And I think it also would be helpful for the county, you know, to be mindful of these things when expanding UDBs and where, how property should be utilized. In contrast, if you go look at California, you know, they have a lack of water issue. And now some farmland has recently had to be surrendered and turned back to nature because they cannot farm on it anymore. So we're looking at changes to uses of property that will happen. And probably the first thing we're going to be impacted with, uh, aside from sea level rise, is saltwater intrusion.
Yes.
You know, and how we're going to be coping with those issues as well, uh, that'll come first. And if we don't have the proper water flows through our state in hydrology, uh, it'll happen a lot sooner. So, um, I'm totally in favor of this.
All right. I think it's a great idea. Um, just for those out there who ask questions about costs and things like that. I asked Christina about that yesterday. First, first of all, this would come out of the city attorney's office budget, number one. And number two, you know, the cost to begin with the first time around was not significant and this would be less than that.
Correct.
It's because it's an update, so.
This is an update.
Right, so.
And the same lawyers available to update it. So it's a question of updating a lot of the, a lot of the, um, the, uh, linkages have expired, so you need to.
Right.
A lot of just updating things in, in case law, especially in Alaska, Louisiana, and Carolinas. There's a lot of developments in the last six years that will be pertinent.
And also too, for the South Florida Regional Climate Compact, uh, they come out with local, updated local sea level rise projections, uh, which we use as guiding documents, so that could be included in there. Because I believe the reference we had in there was from two thousand fifteen. Uh, the latest ones they have, uh, they updated in two thousand nineteen and should be coming out with updated ones in the next few years as well, so.
All right. I want to add that, you mentioned saltwater intrusion a few years ago at the U Center. Uh, they were using well water and, um, they had the fields redone. And when they went to bring the water back online to irrigate the fields, the saltwater intrusion basically destroyed the fields. So it's not something down the road. It's something that we're already seeing around and the U Center was one perfect example. All right.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Moving on to K one.
K one is a resolution the city commission making provisions for holding a general biannual election on April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three for the election of candidates for the office of mayor and two city commissioners further designating and appointing the city clerk as the official representative of the city commission with respect to the supervision of said general election. Further directing the city clerk to give notice by publication of the adoption of this resolution and provisions hereof.
I have only one question as it relates to this is One Direction on early voting. Uh, the library is still under construction? So I'm not sure that, I, I've asked them for an update. They're, they can't give me one as to whether or not they're going to be done by April. So we would talk to Fred and he's not here, but, uh, see if we could use the U Center. But is that something that the commission would like? And then, you know, how many days would we?
What did we do last? Remind me what we did on the, on the runoff? Didn't we do?
The, uh, a weekend before the runoff and a weekend before the, the election.
Sorry. So the weekend in between and then the weekend of. So, because if the initial.
The election will be on Tuesday, would be Saturday, Sunday prior to the election.
Right. Yeah, I thought it was a good thing, personally. I think the more options people have, um, the better. In fact, I was going to make a comment and not, this has nothing to do with the decision we're making today, but I was just going to make this comment. And it may be more of like a, not, not a maybe, I think it is a charter issue, but, you know, one of the things that occurred when we moved to having runoff in the city, which is a good idea, it's a very tight process. It's a two-week window.
Marathon.
Well, it's, well, it's not enough of a marathon is the problem. Like, you know, you have basically absentee ballots, which compose such a big percentage of votes in any current modern-day election. You know, the turnaround time to get those things in and out is really small. And I, and my point is just, you're going to have a runoff, great, but you don't want to, uh, have less people voting in the runoff. You want to have as close to as possible as people voted the first time around. And so it's just something for, I think, for you all to consider moving forward. Like, maybe it's something that we should consider looking at the charter and making it a month, making it, you know, whatever you guys think the appropriate amount of time is. But that's one comment. The other comment is, and this is just a matter of happenstance, but this year, for example, this falls on the Tuesday of Easter week, which is a week where a lot of people travel, a lot of kids are off school. You know, we, it's tricky and it's, it's happened before. I think, again, it really just depends when Easter falls and it just happens this year, it falls on the ninth. Um, so like my kids are off that full week of school, for example. Just things to consider, you know, maybe there's a way to tweak however this is phrased in the charter so that you can A, navigate that Easter component and B, have a slightly longer runoff period. I don't, I wouldn't go to a, like what the county does where you have this really prolonged process. But I think if you add three or four weeks, it would help with, especially with the absentee ballots, um, which currently is, as you know, if you've ever been involved in one, uh, it's an extremely quick turnaround.
Yeah, it's, you know, trying to get people to make sure that they've received it and mailed it.
Yeah.
And returned it in time.
Right.
As opposed to having to go drop it off, you know, can you drop it off? Where do you drop it off? It, it was, that's why I called it a marathon. It was, it was exhausting. It was exhausting.
Well, because you already had a marathon before you start running that one, you know? You, so, a-again, something to consider and it, to me, it's not about convenience. Convenience is important. But you're impacting the result of the election potentially, right? Because of the turnout is going to drop and any, any, you know, results are going to be impacted accordingly. So anyway, that's not a decision for today. I'm just bringing it up now. It's something that everybody should just think about. And when there's an opportune time between now and probably the following election, there might be something to look into tweaking.
It's a, it's a very good idea because the, the hardest thing was to make sure that everybody knew that the election wasn't over. They thought the election was over.
Right.
Because if you're the top vote getter, you could lose still. Because people don't show up.
So did we, uh, Billy, to your question, did we do early voting for the, the initial day as well?
Yes, we did.
So the weekend leading up to the eleventh and then the weekend leading up to the runoff date would both be, okay. I, I thought that was good. I don't know what you guys thought. I think it's, early voting is a good idea.
It was great.
Yeah. I wish it was the library, but, uh, you know, we can do the U Center or wherever else you guys think is the most.
U Center is a great location. They've got great parking in and out, not too jammed up.
Yeah.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Moving on to K two.
Yes, Mayor, K two is related. It's a resolution the city commission granting permission to the city clerk to proceed with preparation of the municipal election form in conjunction with Miami-Dade County Elections Department for Services Materials and Support to be rendered in connection with the Coral Gables General Biannual Election of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three to procure the necessary ballots and other forms to arrange the use of voting machines, provide appropriate absentee ballot request policies, and canvas of, of returns from our designated precincts within Coral Gables.
Uh, this one's just giving me permission to, uh, you know, procure and basically contract out with Miami-Dade County to process the election.
That's good. I'll move it.
I'll second.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Menendez?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Lago?
Yes. Are there any other items that we need to address on the agenda? I don't think so. Anything else?
Um, Jenna, I've got, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Updates and so forth for you all. Later today, our, we, we put together an accomplishments list, so residents will realize just how hardworking this commission has been. This, this recent round. So these cards are available with a QR code and it has a, a four-page listing. At least it was four pages when I printed it out on eight and a half by eleven pieces of paper to understand, you know, how we've worked together as a team. Uh, this is not everything that we've done.
Just a few highlights.
Just a few highlights, so, you know, things that impact the residents. So that should be available later today. Lena has a stack of these cards. She's going to put them out on the table, at least for folks to use. I'm including them in my very belatedly merit, um, being mailed New Year's cards. They're not Christmas cards anymore. So we were waiting for you to get on board and have you added to the Christmas card, uh, Mayor Casey. And so that's a pleasure. Uh, second exciting thing is, um, dog parks. Fifteen oh-five Ponce, uh, has the fence up, uh, put up. I went by and I visited last night. There's a little tweak on the latch on the gate that needs to be installed. I think we'll have it done in a day or two. Um, so that's wide open. I already got a message from a resident, just totally excited, even with the gate broken, having been able to take their, their pet over there to run. It's, it's a nice, big park for, um, it's open to the public in our city. Second is Salvatore Park. The city manager, I think, has an update for us on that because the procurement code process has been done.
Yes, the, the contract has been, has been awarded. And, uh, we're, we're ready to really, um, uh, start construction.
Okay.
So we should have a grand, a, um, a ribbon cutting there, uh, as far as the park is concerned.
Okay, so I'm, that's another exciting thing. And third, if you want to get in shape and want to go, the DCC challenge is up. They have, you know, various lengths of rides if you want to do it. Uh, there's the fifteen mile, the thirty-five mile that starts at University of Miami, so it's convenient for all of us to, to join in there. And then if you really want to get in shape, you have, uh, what, the fifty mile and the hundred mile one, but.
I'll be there. I'll be there.
You'll be there? Where, where are you going to start?
Well, I'm, I'm for sure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, for sure, I'm gonna start the race. Finish line, finish line.
Well, I mean, I'm going to do the one from U M because it's just so convenient. I can just, I can bike down there and start with the race and, uh, get back within a decent number of hours in a day to be able to accomplish other things with the family. So, um, I invite you to come and I know that the chamber's working on a Gables group. So I'll share the link with you as soon as, uh, Mr. Coral Gables, uh, Mark Trobich sends it to me today.
All right.
Kenya?
Two things. One is, those communications have my image. I always have images of some sort. There you go.
There you go.
Nice.
Sunday, this past December, we had, uh, Star Wars, the original. We almost had a packed house, which was great. And we had, uh, one thing I noticed and I mentioned to the crowd is we had little kids, we had parents, we had grandparents. We had all generations coming to these movies. So on Sunday at five PM, free tickets. Go to actorsplayhouse.org. We're showing the original Raiders of the Lost Ark, Indiana Jones. Just so happens, I'm happy to say the timing, the new Indiana Jones, the fifth one is coming out soon.
Nice.
So, um, you might as well get caught up to speed with the original story before you go see that one. Um, but it's free to everybody. It doesn't matter the age. Bring the kids, bring the grandkids. It's a wonderful experience. And in fact, people were saying they saw the Star Wars. And after so many years of now watching movies on TV, to go see some of these great blockbuster movies on the big screen, they remembered how much they actually enjoy the ride. Um, so besides the movie, because I don't think we've mentioned it, maybe someone else is going to mention it. Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, we start the farmer's market. So it's day one, weekend one of the farmer's market, which is a great community event. So far, the weather's been great. So there's no reason, if you're in Coral Gables, that you shouldn't be out there enjoying the market, um, movies. There's so much to do, so much to offer. So be, please be active, be part of what makes Coral Gables wonderful.
Perfect. Mayor Casey?
Nothing.
Vice Mayor?
I'm good.
Nothing. All right. In closing, Mayor, this is your last meeting.
Great last meeting. Thanks, everybody. It's not even one o'clock.
We did that to honor you.
I know you have a lot of work to do, so, uh, we'll, we'll close quickly. I just have one, one thing I need to address. And that is, we've made a lot of progress with Merrick Park. You know, a lot of new landscaping, the signage has, um, been replaced to a certain extent, refreshed. I know we're working with a few different things there. We need to have another meeting with them potentially. I want to make sure that we get some deadlines. We need to get a schedule in regards to finishing the remaining work. So I ask you to please, uh, get with my staff so that we can have a third walkthrough of the, of the facility. Because I need to understand when are they going to complete the landscaping that's pending. With that being said, nothing else. Meeting adjourned.
All right.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.